Good evening, I would like to call our fifteenth meeting of fiscal year 2021 to order. April Anderson couldn't make it tonight, so as the Planning Board Secretary, I will be chairing the meeting. Per Governor's orders, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, public meetings of the Milton Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Our meetings are televised on Milton Cable Access. Real-time comment can be addressed to the Planning Board using zoom.com. You can join our meetings by finding our meeting ID and passcode on the top of our meeting agendas every week. And you can find our meeting agendas on the town of Milton Planning Board website. So with that, I would like to start our administrative items. Our next meeting dates are March 25th and April 18th, if there aren't any objections.
Nope.
And I forgot, are we supposed, we should go around the room and introduce ourselves? So as I mentioned, Denny Swenson, Planning Board Member and Secretary. Do you want to go Kathleen?
Kathleen O'Donnell, member.
And Cheryl Taggias, member.
Okay, great. Okay, any objections to March 25th and April 18th as our next meeting dates?
No.
Okay, great. And for our meeting minutes, I move to approve the meeting minutes from February 25th, 2021 as amended.
I would second that.
I had a couple of things I put in the comments, did you see those Danny and Kathleen? I didn't actually make edit to it, but I asked a question because it didn't match my recollection and I didn't get a chance to go back and check the tape.
Well, some of the changes, I didn't see the comments.
You know what, I, I had a similar question. Why don't we take a minute to look at that? And I will go ahead and check the tape because I did think Cheryl was right on at least one of those items. I had assumed you fixed it, but.
I'm sorry, I didn't get you that.
No, I should have read it closer. And I, and I'm happy to check the tape, so let's hold off on that one. We're not far behind on these at all, so, so we will table that for next time. And I will open it up to the staff update now. Would that be Tim or Allison who'd like to do the staff update?
I will. Excuse me, Rich is in the attendees side right now.
Thank you for catching that.
Okay, I just hopefully took care of Rich.
There he comes.
There he is.
Hey, Rich.
Hello.
Hi, Rich.
Hey there.
Welcome aboard. Okay, did, did Tim or Allison want to do the staff update tonight?
Yeah, thanks, Sunny. So just a couple, a couple of quick things.
And I want to apologize, I forgot to have the staff introduce themselves. So do you mind, Tim, and do you mind Tim introducing himself?
Tim Zerwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Allison, would you mind?
Well, of course, Allison Quinn, Assistant Planner.
And do we have Julia as well?
She is here.
Yes. Julia, Town Clerk.
Well, thank you for bearing with me.
Not quite Town Clerk, Julia.
No, no, not Town Clerk.
Wait, made me feel better. Okay, please carry on, Tim, sorry about that.
Just gonna say, is Julia throwing her hat in the ring? That's breaking news. Julie, if I lived in town, I would vote for you.
Me too, you got my vote.
So, thanks, everybody. Also, that's not a slate on Sue Galvin, who actually married my wife and I, who is excellent and a great town clerk. I get myself in hot water here with jokes, so.
I know, I do too, I love Sue Galvin.
Let's just get on to serious business. Just a couple of quick things. The, I probably updated the board in the past on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan that the Master Plan Implementation Committee has initiated. We're working with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council on that. I have a contract that has passed muster with Town Council and we'll be getting that in front of the Select Board at the, the next available agenda that we can get on. So we should be up and running with that bicycle master planning process within the next couple of weeks. So, you know, we'll definitely keep this group posted, you know, we'll keep the Master Plan Implementation Committee posted. I think most of the kind of administration and kind of oversight of that planning process will happen through the Master Plan Committee, but obviously we'll want to keep you all apprised of that. The, the timeline on that planning process, MAPC is confident that we can get it done by year end. But the contract is a sort of a year-long timeline. But we're all gonna, you know, work hard to get that up and running and ready, set, go by the end of the year. So very exciting. I think it's building on a lot of really good work that the town has been doing, you know, in terms of the Traffic Impact Mitigation Committee, our Complete Streets Prioritization Plan, I think the Bike Plan is a great next step. I, as you may know, I commute to work by bike. And let me tell you, the, the amount of kids that I see out on their bikes on my just short route home is staggering. So, you know, a lot of, a lot of folks are out there on their bikes and we want to make sure that we plan for, you know, safe and efficient bike routes. So I'm very excited about that and, you know, we'll, we'll let you know how that goes. Another thing, I think, of particular interest to the board. We had a meeting last week with the aforementioned amazing Town Clerk Sue Galvin and a couple of members of the Bylaw Review Committee and then a representative of our vendor at General Code, just to kind of talk through how we can, you know, push the zoning code digitization process kind of over the finish line. That group has been working very hard on this project. It's a lot more complicated than it's, than it, than it seems at first blush. But this is one of those things where, you know, you want to put the, the upfront effort into getting it right so that, you know, the, the maintenance and the ongoing, you know, updates of that, you know, are, we can have confidence in it and it just makes the job easier. So we did have a meeting last week. I'll be attending the meeting of the, the full Bylaw Review Committee. I think it's next Thursday, the 18th, to kind of talk through a strategy for, you know, concrete next steps for that group to again, you know, you know, push that digitization process forward. I think we do have a, a plan of attack on that. It's just a matter of, you know, getting the right people, you know, in, in the right direction. So that all sounds very vague, but I, I don't want to bore you too much with the details. I think we'll get some more coming out of that meeting next week. But we are, you know, all hands on deck on that project because, you know, it is critically important to have an accurate and updated and quite frankly, easy to use zoning bylaw up on the website. So working very hard on that. The final thing that I wanted to let you all know about is, and this is something, again, I may have reported on this when we submitted the application, but one of the, one of the ways that the Commonwealth has been distributing funding for COVID relief and COVID recovery is through a program through the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative, which is sort of a subset of the Department of Housing and Community Development. And they have this, what they call the Local Rapid Recovery Planning Program. And it was a, it was a non-competitive grant, so if we, if we got an application in with some, some good ideas, we were fairly confident that we would get some of that funding. So we just got the, the letter back a week ago. So the town's gotten $60,000 of a, you know, a no strings grant to, to match us up with a, a planning facilitator to do rapid recovery planning for the East Milton Business District. This program is about helping business districts and, and sort of, you know, local economies get back on their feet after COVID. So we were matched up with Beta Group, who should be familiar to everyone. They're working on the, the townwide traffic model. They've done some other work in Milton Village, very familiar with, with Milton and East Milton particularly. And it's actually a really interesting program. You know, I, I kind of, you know, again, it was, it was something, let's throw an application in and see what happens. And, you know, we, we had a webinar this week, kind of explaining how the program's going to work. And it's going to be some really, you know, interesting data collection among the businesses. They're, you know, putting together a, a business survey that they're going to, you know, interpret the results of that for us and give us some really good data that, you know, quite frankly, you know, as a department, we're a pretty small shop. You know, I, I think we do a pretty good job, but, you know, neither Allison nor myself have a particular expertise in economic development planning. I don't want to speak for Allison, but I don't. You know, so, so when these, when these opportunities come up to get, you know, professional technical assistance in, you know, economic and business development planning, it's going to be a really great opportunity for the town. And, and the way it's going to work is, you know, Beta and the Commonwealth are going to help us with this research and really just dig into it and kind of figure out what are some really quick, you know, high-impact, you know, projects that we can help our business district out with, you know, whether it's, you know, administrative capacity, web capacity, public realm improvements, private realm improvements, you know, to, to really come up with, with, with a really, you know, quickly implementable plan to, to do some projects. And then what, what everyone's crossing their fingers for is that there'll be another round of funding to, you know, help implement those plans. So I, I think it's going to be a really great opportunity to do the type of planning that we don't really have an opportunity to do a ton of. And I, I think it'll be very exciting. So we've got a preliminary meeting with Beta next week. We'll do a more formal kickoff with them once we kind of figure out some logistics. And then this is a several months-long process. I think we need to have a plan ready in place for certification by the Commonwealth by the end of August. So again, we'll report back on that, but I, I think it's a really exciting opportunity. So, you know, kind of building off some of the other work we're doing in East Milton. You know, we, we spent a lot of time in the village, we're going to continue to spend time in the village. We're starting to look at East Milton a little bit more. And I think it's, it's going to be good. Those are our two business districts and they're, they're really important to the town. So that's all I've got, Allison. I don't know if you've got anything that you want to report on that you've been working on.
Um, nothing that I'm particularly happy about. I had to, we were gonna apply for a dredging grant, but at this time I had to pull it. We're gonna try and get the application ready for next year. One of the requirements was that we'd be ready to go shovel-ready by July 1st and that's just not feasible for us right now.
You won't get, the dredging guys are absolutely maxed out, you wouldn't get one anyway.
Yeah, so much to my chagrin. It'll have to wait till, at least application will, will go next year.
But you ought to at least try to think about who you might possibly line up because those guys get, I know from other dredging projects that I've been involved in that, you know, it's a year wait.
We've been working with Child's Engineering for quite some time. They're, they're great. They've given us a couple of different options for, for cost depending upon what we would like to do. I've been having some conversations with the city and DCR is going to be looking at, you know, sending out a couple of engineers on that end to look at the Boston side. So hopefully we can come up with a really solid application this time next year.
Right.
Yeah, so that was disappointing news to share, sorry.
Allison has been like our colossus of roads, straddling the DePonce River on, on, on both sides, just really wrangling support for, for this concept. So a little bit of a setback for us, but she's been doing yeoman's work on that and hopefully, you know, that'll be able to pay dividends when we get some, some matching funds lined up. So kudos to her.
And it's not wasted effort, you can apply it for next year and we'll be better for it. You know, it's, it's funny how things work out, you know? And, and great, great job on bringing that money in. I'm sure the Chamber of, you know, Commerce will be thrilled to, to hear that. That's wonderful work, it's very exciting and it's, it's, it's why you were all hired. So it's really nice to see it's all coming together. And you had the time to work on that while you were doing so much else with all of these 40Bs and other things that we, we've been dealing with. So I'm very, very thrilled with your staff update all the way around, even yours, Allison. So thank you. So before we jump into our public hearing, I just wanted to see if there was anyone here for Citizen Speak. Anyone who wants to speak on a subject that's not on our agenda tonight is welcome to come forward. Our agenda includes two public hearings, one on 30 Adams Street and one on 524 Adams Street. So if you're here to talk about that, you might want to wait till we are in the midst of those discussions. But is there anyone here who wants to talk about anything other than that? So would I be able to see them raising their hand on my computer or does someone else take care of that? I don't see any hands raised.
I have not, I have not seen anyone raise their hand, so.
Okay, so we can jump into the public hearing and, and if anyone wants to speak on any of the topics on our agenda, they can as we arrive at them. We will open it to the public in, during the discussion at some point. So if it's okay, I would like to start with the site plan approval for 30 Adams Street. If you think that's a good approach, Tim, just stick with the agenda.
Yeah, that was, that, that was the first item. So I've promoted Hajar Management and I think we're still waiting on Derek Rubenoff, who's the architect for the project. I promoted Derek and he may be in, in, in the in-between right now. But if, if Hajar Management wants to unmute and let me know if there's anyone else in the waiting room that we should be promoting to panelists.
I'm here, this is Derek Rubenoff.
Hi Derek.
Hey.
Is there any? Is there anyone else in the, in the attendees that is on your team that we should be promoting?
Is Paul Mahoney there? He's from Hajar.
Yep, I'm, I'm here. But Chuck Hajar and Julie Horn might be here, but I, I believe in a listening capacity. So we're gonna pretty much leave that to Derek to provide the information.
I'm going to bring Julie up in the panel just in case.
Great.
So let, let me just lead off and then we'll, we'll hand it to the applicant to kind of explain their project. 30 Adams Street, if, if you're not familiar, is the Citizens Bank Building in Milton Village. There's the stairwell to the station, there's the Hajar Management Office, but that's, that's the building we're talking about. Derek, you, you might be able to shed a little bit more light on this when, during your presentation, but there is a recent interior renovation to the Citizens Bank Building. And we're talking today about an exterior renovation. My, my recollection from talking with the Building Commissioner about this was that the, the interior project didn't, did not rise to the 800 square foot threshold that triggers site plan review typically. But once you sort of tack on the, the outdoor facade project, those two sort of elements of the project, you know, tip the scales and cross the threshold. So that interior work is done. There was a building permit issued and, and that's been done, or at least in, in progress. You guys can correct me if I'm wrong. And I, I think it was the Building Commissioner's intent to just make sure that, you know, if you've got an 800 square foot project, you're coming in for site plan review. So we're, we're only dealing with the facade right now, which I, I didn't do a, a full technical review, as you're probably aware from, from not having received it. Because it is a funny kind of project in the sense that a lot of the, a lot of the things in site plan review are kind of, for lack of a better term, horizontal in nature in terms of, you know, runoff and, and site plan, quite frankly. And the, the, the facade project is, is vertical in, in nature, as you can kind of see from the plan. So, you know, this is, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll let Derek and his team kind of explain what they're up to in terms of the renovations and the changes to the exterior and, and materials. The, the one thing that I, I will say, and, and, and board members, you can, you know, dig into this if, if you feel you need to. You know, the, the one thing that I would want to have a little bit more information on and discussion of is, is the lighting and comparing the, any new lighting to the existing lighting and what kind of impact that would have. I think that's the most relevant kind of site plan review nexus impact of, of this project. So, you know, that will be one thing that I would be interested in hearing a little bit more about. But if that's all, that's all I've got for now, so I'll just hand it off to Derek and, and his team to kind of walk through what they're thinking.
Great. Well, thank you, Tim, and thank you to everybody on the board there this evening. Appreciate the opportunity to present to you. Do you want me to share my screen or do, do we want to just go through what's on, on your screen? What would you prefer, Tim?
I, I will stop screening, I will stop with the share and you, and you can pull it up on yours.
Yeah, that way I can kind of dart around a little bit to some things. Great, so I'm going to share my screen. And there we go. So here is the, right now you can probably see the existing conditions of the Citizens Bank. Is that, is that what you're looking at on my screen?
Yeah.
Great, okay. So I'm, I'll try to do a quick kind of run-through of what we're proposing to do. So here are the existing conditions. And the building appears to be a, a single-story building on Adams Street here, but actually is more stories as it goes down to the back on the slope there. So the dominant feature of the building, as it is right now, is the, is the main tenant on the first floor, which is Citizens Bank. And then there also is the main entrance to the landlord of the building, which is Hajar Management Company. And their offices are downstairs once you go in. And, you know, I'm trying to remember when this was last remodeled, but I want to say it was probably around 1960 by the look of it. And I'm sure it was pretty sleek at the time, but it is, you know, it's, it's looking really worn out. So as you look at what, you know, might be, have once been clean, modern lines, you have a lot of kind of smearing and, and denting and, you know, the, the planters are kind of falling apart, the storefront is not code compliant with energy code. There's, there's rust going on, there is some, there's a lot, some holes in the bricks here and there, there's exposed conduit in certain places. And, and the brick is, it's kind of, the brick is kind of interesting in some places, other places it's looking like it needs to have some repairs or be, or be cleaned. So, and then on top of that, the signs are kind of just clunked on, right? You've got this, this box sign clunked on there and then you have, just waiting for my web browser to allow me to go a little to the left here and it's not doing, oh, there we go, alright. And then we have this sign, box sign clunked on to there. So not a lot of grace in that and we thought we could do better. So lastly, you've got the, you know, on the Great Thoroughfare of, on Elliott Street here, you terminate with a view of a mechanical unit. So we thought that might be better screened. So let's take a look at what we'd like to do. We are thinking basically along the lines of, in addition to kind of playing with the canopy of the existing Citizens Bank, Citizens Bank, improving the signage so that the, the character of the bank and the look of the bank is in, in harmony with the recent improvements that have been made on the inside that were mentioned by Tim earlier. We, we're thinking of this as kind of a veiling of certain elements of the, of the existing building. It's not that we necessarily really dislike the, the existing building, but clearly parts of it would be best either upgraded or, or covered with something fresh. But we didn't want to cover the whole thing, we wanted to kind of, kind of leave some moments on it. So let's take a look at what we did here. So I'm going to bring up our plans here. And here's kind of a before and after. You can see that on your screen there. So what we've done is add some folding planes of this really cool horizontal semiticious material. It's a fiber cement material and it's a European kind of higher-end one. And it acts as a kind of a rain screen, it really is a sort of veil. And what we're doing is we're using it to define the two tendencies. Because Hajar doesn't really have much of a presence on the building right now. We thought, well, you know, we, we could improve that by, by, by doing this move. So where the brick is kind of smeary and rather yucky looking and has all these strange things on it, we thought, okay, well, maybe we'll cover that with something fresh. We'll put a fresh kind of veil on it. And we'll have that in a three-dimensional way wrap around this corner here. So you can see that where I'm pointing here, if you, if you could kind of see where my mouse is, or where it says citizens here, that folds in three dimensions. So it's not just a painted shed sort of thing, it's, it's actually a, you know, three-dimensional architecture. But, oh, sorry, and, and we're kind of doing the same thing here over with Hajar. We're wrapping the corner here with the, the cement, semiticious material, which is called Oco Skin. And it's been used successfully on several other buildings around the Boston area. Then we thought, well, let's play some, play up the, kind of the scale thing a little bit. There's already a little bit of playing of scale with the existing building where you have the canopy down low and then the brick building up a little higher behind it as a sort of stage set behind the canopy. There's probably, we, we felt like there was too much canopy really. And we wanted to get some, some more sun on, on the building here. And again, we wanted to help define the entrance to Hajar and help define the entrance to Citizens as separate things. And that, by having this canopy stretch across Citizens Bank, almost all the way to Hajar, it doesn't do it as well as what we're proposing here. So, so we cut the canopy back here. We're proposing to cut that canopy back too close to where the second post is. So we'll remove that first post, we'll leave the second one and have a little bit of an overhang. Then what we wanted to do is rather than this kind of old smeary metal that's on the side of that canopy, put a nice clean C-channel, paint that and have it be crisp. And then, kind of playing with that idea of scale, we wanted to give the canopy a little more presence than say throwing a box sign on top of it. But rather, but we felt like if we had just a slim element here, it might not be enough. So we had this really idea, which I'm excited about, of putting perforated metal panels that are more perforated as they go upward. So by the top, you know, at the bottom of the perforated panel, it's fairly solid, but by the top of the panel is fairly open. And so it kind of began with that idea of the veil, you know, sort of revealing as you go up toward the sky. So what that does is gives this canopy a little more of a sense of mass that steps it from large to medium down to the sidewalk of the human scale. And again, the canopy is create, create a nice, we're adding a canopy here on, on the left here for Hajar to, to help accentuate that, that entrance and, and make it feel a little more like a place rather than a hole in the wall, which it kind of is, it's sort of just a hole with a door right now. Here it becomes a little, a little bit of a gesture here, it's, it's more of a place that you enter the building to go to, to that, to the owner of the building. So in between these, with these areas of Oco Skin, we thought it'd be really nice to actually have these reveals of the material that is there right now. So again, kind of playing with the notion of veiling, there are places where the veil gets removed or the veil doesn't cover everything. So we see the existing brick here, we'll take some of these devices off hopefully if we, if we can. But the idea is we'll clean this part of the brick and then that shows up on the side of the building over here as well, where we have these very, various asymmetrical cutouts. We're kind of playing a game of asymmetrical, asymmetrical cutouts here. Here on the left for a window, here at the far right where the depository is. And, and then again, kind of behind the Oco Skin, you've got the brick revealing itself and then behind that, you've got another C-channel like you do here at the, at these canopies, you have one up top. Again, what's on the existing building here is kind of worn out and it's sort of clunky looking thing that's poking out. What we like to do is take that off and put a nice clean crisp C-channel that'll appear like it floats behind everything here. And then another layer behind that is more of this perforated metal panels on a regular rhythm of posts. And that's up here at the top here and that helps to screen, won't entirely screen, but it'll mostly screen the mechanical unit that is so, you know, kind of naked up there right now. So citizens looked at this and they, they were excited about it. They have placed basically this signage, a larger version of their existing sign, but not as long here, and that would be, I believe these are facelat channel letters here. Hajar would have a sign. Hajar would have a sign as well. And Citizens wants to put their logo larger. I believe these all conform to signage code, signage by law here, but I need to look at that a little more closely. That we just sort of got this the other day from Citizens and tried to put this on quickly for this presentation. So they'd like to do their logo on the side so that it could be seen from the other side of the river and, and from the, the trolley station down below. So also in this, we're removing the planter close to Hajar, which is falling apart. And we're restoring the planter at the far right over by the depository. And we would be replacing the aluminum and glass storefront systems, which are really dated, you know, back from, let's see, I guess it's like 60 years old now. So these will be up to energy code, and they'll be a nice crisp black. So pretty simple collection of elements that are sort of layered on, on each other to give some architectural interest and different senses of scale. I'll show you a couple of pictures of some materials here. This is an early version of the design, but just to kind of give you an idea what the Oco Skin is like. It's got slightly different tones. Each piece has a slightly different tone. So it's not completely monolithic. It's a little bit of, of color variation and the textural variation. Some of them will be smooth. Some of them will be more textural. And this isn't exactly what we're doing with the, with the perforated panels. It's going to be a smaller scale perforation, but it kind of gives you the idea of how the different sized holes or combinations of holes would potentially feel. We're again envisioning that this is, has nothing behind it. Sorry, this is a rather low resolution of version of the rendering. Let me see if I have a better one here. So again, this will be more transparent as it goes up. Again, this is a little bit low in terms of resolution, but the idea is that you'll be able to see through more and more of the panel as it, as you go up. They're not very high. They're only, I think they're about two and a half or three feet high. So the, I'm just going to flip over to Citizens, Citizens signage package here because they show a little more about what is proposed at the depository. So right now, if we go over here to here, this is kind of like a missed opportunity. It's just this big white blank wall. And I suppose somebody could maybe sit there. It's not really room to sit. But this is really a whole lot of nothing here that's there right now. And we were talking back and forth with Citizens about what to do with that to make it interesting. Citizens would like to do this kind of abstract pattern of their logo on either side and kind of make these, these vertical sort of off-gray elements to it. So it gives it a sense of rhythm and a little bit of color and some interest because of the shapes of the logo, but also some branding. And again, we essentially keep the, the planter upgraded on, on the right side here. Good. And then there'd be a green band in the window, according to what Citizens would like to do at the bottom of the window. So I think I've touched upon everything. Paul, am I, anything I'm missing here?
The lighting was important, Tim.
The lighting was important. Thank you. That was your cue. So the lighting, what we're going to do is we're going to have some under, under canopy lighting. I'm just going to go over to the left here and start here. So we're going to remove this light fixture. So there's this rather kind of old granite that's there. That's going to be covered now with the Oco Skin, and we're going to remove that light fixture. And what we're putting in its place is, is the, the canopy. And the canopy will have a recessed light under it. So you'll get light where you need it, which is at the entry. And then the sign above would, would glow, would be facelit. Now, over here, Citizens, under the canopy, again, you'd have recessed lights. I think there are some there right now. And over on the very far side, and again, I apologize, the rendering is a little lower resolution than I was hoping for. But this is just a simple sign light here that would be mounted to the Oco Skin. So again, if we look at what's over on the right right now, there's this kind of a, a black sconce that's coming out. And, and what we do is just update that with something a little more in character with the proposed design, something very clean and modern. So let's just see if I can grab an image of something like it's, you know, sign light. Yeah, it's basically going to be something like, see if this comes up, I thought it was show. I can look at the exact fixture if we're curious, but it's going to be basically something like this. So a simple black arm, very clean and modern. And again, if you need to see the exact fixture, I can find that in the drawing set. We can do a quick search for it. So we're not anticipating, you know, light pollution being generated by this, for instance. And that, that fixture over that I was just mentioning is mainly to provide some light at the, at the depository box, which by nature would be used after hours.
With the lights around the signs, would they be pointing up or would they be pointing down?
Lights around the signs. I'm not sure what you mean by lights around the signs.
Oh, I thought you said.
Derek, if you want to, if you want to explain what like a halo lit sign means, I think that's what Danny's getting at.
Yeah. Just try to see where Citizens has that in here.
Derek, while, while you're looking at that, I'll just remind the board that the, the sign program will be subject to approval by the, the sign review committee. So that's a separate process and a separate building permit that the applicant's going to need to get. So these are all absolutely relevant questions, but our, our sign review committee will also be looking at this.
Okay. So Tim, sometimes what we've done in other applications is we give the opinion of planning board to the sign review committee for them to take or leave. But we have done that on other applications.
So we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's, that's, that's great. Happy to, happy to bring whatever the planning board wants to the sign review committee. It's awesome.
We, we had anticipated having these be facelit channel letters. Maybe two or three inches deep.
So when you say facelit, you're talking about an acrylic face with a light that's on the ins, inside of that acrylic. Is that correct?
That's right.
Yeah. So Danny, it's the light that's coming from within the letter itself. And so you get a glow of the letter, so you don't have a light that's shining on it from outside.
That's right. There's no light that's shining on the sign. The, the light would be integral to the sign and, and the letters with, the front faces of the letters would light up at night. It's not really, this material isn't really good for, I mean, we could do a halo lit, but it's because the material has basically half-inch gaps between each of these slats. It would be a little, it might be a little hard to read them, the signs, you know, at night. Because again, if you look at the, the material that we're using, it's got these slats to it. So, yeah, I don't, I don't think it's really, I think that any kind of halo glow might, might kind of lose readability. So unless there's some prohibition against the facelit, we'd like to do facelit. But we have.
So the Hajar sign and the Citizen sign would be lit up at night? And right now, they're not lit up? Are they currently lit up?
Well, yeah, you've got, if we go back to take a look at what's there right now, we've got these internally lit box signs.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and they come on each night. Okay.
And they come on each night. Yeah, that's right. And then Hajar doesn't have a sign at all, except for a little kind of vinyl thing on their window, their door. So we'd like to give Hajar more of a presence, but clearly Citizens Bank is, is the, is the dominant tenant. And it's the tenant that the public will have access to.
So are you going to show the signing committee what the comparison is and the size between what you have now and what you're proposing? Because that would probably be a good idea.
I don't have measurements of the signs that are out there right now, but we do have measurements in our drawing set of what's proposed. Do they need to see what's existing?
Well, I mean, it seems to me that what might be somebody's concern is that this is a much bolder look than what you have on the existing building. In full disclosure, I am a, you know, a holder of a banking account at Citizens. But is that, if it were me, I would want to be able to answer the question from the public or such that the, this, what the impact of, it looks like it's a lot larger, but maybe it isn't. When you figure on the existing one, it's just a long green bar with lights behind it. Seems like that would be a good piece of information to have out there.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can kind of just take a look at it and, and evaluate. This is most of the length of this existing building. Come on, let's get over here. There we go. All right. So most of the length of this existing side of the building, which I, I can look up the measurement, but I believe it's close to 20 feet long. And it's, it's about two feet high. So you've got 40 square feet of, of that green sign that's there right now. Whereas what we're proposing on the side there is, is five by five. It is, it's 25 square feet. So we're actually proposing a, a smaller sign.
Well, as I said, I think that when you're making that presentation, that's a case, that's a point that you want to make.
Yeah, good. Good, good to hear. Appreciate that.
Okay, so while, while we're, I guess, talking about signage, I'll chime in with a couple of thoughts myself. You know, this is a business district, but it's also, we recently passed a mixed-use overlay for this area. And so we anticipate that we'll get a mix of business and residential projects coming down the pipe here. And I would be concerned about too much facelit light square footage, if you will, because it, it does speak more to commercial than to sort of a mix of uses. So I guess I would just have you think about that. That falls into the purview of the sign review committee, as Tim has reminded us. But that would be one of my comments and concerns. And then the, the second would just be the size of the logo on the side. That's on the, the left in the image that's on the screen now. It's quite a bit larger, I think, than the one that's on the front. And it's, you know, it's fairly dominant there. So if that's all green and glowing at night, again, maybe there would be hours that these would be on and, and then turned off at a certain hour. But again, this is, these are things I would like for the sign review committee to consider when they, when they take a look at it.
Yeah, I, I want to think, think, one of the things that was informing the thinking about doing the, the five-foot-high sign on the side is, it'll be viewable from quite a distance away. So if you picture yourself down Adams Street here, you know, you, you look at some of the other signs that are there. They're quite large because they are seen from several hundred yards away. So it's not a particularly wide sign, that logo that's proposed for the side, but having some height will make it be effective.
We're, we're anticipating that there may be further build-out in these areas. And so these, these vistas may not be there for the long haul. And, you know, we're really hoping and encouraging a more pedestrian-friendly district. So I'd like the signage really to be reflective of more of a pedestrian environment than a driver's environment from a distance. I think that's really important.
Yeah, but you, you still will have that train station there, though. So there always will be a gap.
Again, it's kind of the environment of more pedestrian-friendly environment. I understand we're going to have a train station. So it's, you know, there's this idea about signs becoming almost billboard in size. I've heard this a lot myself as an architect. And, you know, when we're looking at having something identified so you can find the citizens when you're looking for it, but we don't need to project it out beyond what its function needs to be, if you will. So there's a balance that needs to be struck. And, and I think the sign on the front is fairly big already for a pedestrian environment. I'm not as concerned about that. But the one on, on the side, I would just offer that to the sign review committee to, to consider.
So.
I do have a few other comments or questions, though, Danny, on that's not just the signage, if I may. Are you ready for that yet?
I, I'm ready for that. I, I would like to hear from the board members, and then I'll open it up to the public. So please carry on.
Thank you. On the side, if you, if you just want to go back to where you were in that image, I think we can use that just for one of my questions, which has to do with the side there on the left. Is the stairway part of the Hajar property or is that MBTA property? That goes down to the trolley there?
Let me, I can look that up for you. Paul, are you able to answer that quickly?
Yes, the, the first stairway, which is beyond, behind the black wrought iron gate, is a, is part of the 30 to 40 Adams Street property. The second stairway, the MBTA one that's blocked off currently with a Jersey barrier, is MBTA property.
All right. So the, that's interesting. I didn't even remember that there's two stairs there. So the one that's part of the, the 30 Adams property, is that gates remaining? Because it doesn't show in the rendering.
Yeah, the gate would remain.
Okay. And then is there any lighting on the side? Is there a light there that's at the top, sort of been hidden a little bit by that conduit? And would that light be remaining or would a new light be placed there? Some kind of light on that stair?
Yeah, I think we, we'd want to, we either bring that out or probably put a, another sign light, like the one that we, like the one that we had around the corner there.
I'm actually thinking something that lights the stair itself rather than the sign.
Yeah, yeah, that would be, the objective would be to light the stair. Yep.
Sorry.
Yeah, so that, but I mean, otherwise I'd say I think I appreciate the improvements. I think the design approach, I appreciate. I have, I, I think it would be definitely an aesthetic improvement and as well as a functional improvement. And so I, I really, I think it would, it'll be a great, I guess, change, if you will, to the building. So, and I think the recessed lights are appropriate. I think they'll, they'll put the light where it needs to be and, and won't go beyond it. So I'm happy to support it with just those comments about the light on the side and the signage.
Great, thank you. Good to hear.
Did Kathleen or Rich want to share comments? Um, I was just, you know, we, we've been spending so much time on this overlay district for the, for the Milton Village. And it's so, I'm sort of curious about the selection of this facade and how that, I don't think it speaks to the buildings that are across the street or next to it. You know, the old Baker, you know, chocolate factory, you're covering up the brick. I can understand that. I mean, I understand that it's not the most attractive building in America in its present condition. And certainly it looks, you know, a lot better this way. But I was wondering whether you had given any thought to sort of addressing it in the context of the Baker chocolate buildings.
That's a great question. And what we tried to do is take the spirit of the building that's, that it, that it already has, which is kind of, I think, again, at one time, it was very modern and sleek 60 years ago, but has, has really kind of gotten worn out. But we wanted to keep that, we wanted to keep the, a bit of that original spirit. And we felt, fundamentally, this is a, a modern building, and it is different than all the other buildings that are around there. And given that it has a long band of, of window for citizens that they want to, you know, they want to continue to have a long band. They don't have a series of arches and piers and so forth, right? So it, it felt like we would be really fighting the spirit of what this building is to try to make it look, say, historical. So we, we thought, you know what, it, it just is a modern building. And there's plenty of other things around there that are beautifully historic. I mean, look at this masonry of the building next door. It's fantastic. I love, when I'm, when I'm over here, I love taking pictures of it and looking at it. And, and you've got, you know, the, the kind of New England-y sort of things that are around it. The Bank of America has that kind of New England kind of feel about it. And it's got the, the correct brick and all that kind of thing. And then the, you've got the wonderful Victorian industrial revolution area, area, Baker Factory across the way here. So it, it felt like, rather than kind of, you know, faking it, you know, trying to be like these other ones, it just felt like the right thing to do to just let it be what it is, which is a modern building. But just, you know, to the 21st century, right? It's, it's okay that it's. It's it's okay that it's different from the other ones, I think, you know? It's not a big imposing building, it's just, it's a small little guy, and you know, what we've tried to do is kind of tell a story about the building with the different layers. So there is the the original brick that's there, um that that'll remain in certain moments, but other things about it are gonna feel refreshed and contemporary. So it'll.
I would, sorry, go ahead.
No, it'll 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 have some contrast with the buildings around it, but not in an imposing way, it'll be kind of a subtle little thing in the square.
I was just gonna add that I I'm familiar with the Oco skin material, uh I'm an architect myself. And the um I think it'll it'll add um a nice level of detail and texture. And contrasted with the metal, the perforated metal. Um, I like that they're keeping the modern uh look of the building, but enhancing it and keeping.
Well, yeah, I mean, I wasn't suggesting that it was Williamsburg and we were gonna be building something completely ridiculous. But I just wanted to sort of hear more about, you know, the discussion, whether there had been a discussion about echoing the, you know, the existing. You know, existing buildings around it, that's all.
Yeah, I know, it's something we thought about quite a bit when we first started sketching, you know, how do we take this thing and make it something interesting? Um, do we try to cover up the whole thing? There was a previous design that was done by a previous architect, it really kind of covered up the entire thing with a a porcelain tile system, we felt that. That didn't seem, it 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 kind of boxed out this above here, it just, it felt like it made it too bulky. And and uh again, it's, we we wanted to kind of catch the spirit of what the building is and give it updates. And at the same time, kind of create a sense of something interesting about it by using this idea about layering of materials and layering of scales.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Rich, did you have any questions or comments?
No, I I I I'm appreciating the discussion, I think um everything's been covered, you know, I don't have any right now.
Okay, thanks. Um, so I was wondering, do you have any visuals of the relationship to the new building? Uh next to the old building, uh I'm trying to get a sense of the new height. And its relationship to the.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for asking. Um, so where the top of this uh steel channel is there, where my mouse is. That's about the same height as uh what the top of the parapet is right now, on the left of the existing building. So this is gonna go up, um I uh let me give you an exact dimension here of how far that's gonna go up. But um, we wanted to um give it a little more presence, so um just looking to see if they need sections. Um, I'm gonna say it goes up about, oh, yeah, here's here's the dimension, okay, whoops, come on. Let's get back to where I was, and let's see if it'll zoom in this time, there we go. So we're, the top of the building is sort of uh, actually just below the, uh the top of the brick is about fifteen feet or so. And we're coming up um about three feet, although we're taking that existing um fascia off. So I wanna say we're coming up about two and a half feet above where the existing fascia is right now, so. Um and but we're not coming up um up everywhere, it's sort of just where the Oco skin is, so um. You know, here and here, and then um we'll have that C-channel here where the existing fascia is. And then we'll have just a few inches behind that, some more of this perforated metal. Um, again, to kind of create that layering effect, and the perforated metal's a little shorter, so you know, there's a handful of different things going on with heights here.
And and um next to it, I understand the building is much taller than this than small.
Yeah, yeah, so you know, again, all you just, all I'd like you to do is just picture uh this being about two and a half feet taller than it is right now. And and you know, this building where Milton Village Hardware is quite a big, heavy, big brick mass. It goes up um, you know, three stories, but uh some rather tall stories at that.
So you wouldn't impact the windows on the side of their building?
No, not at all, because we're not extending that um parapet back on the side, and this is all bricked up anyway here.
Okay.
And again, part of the reason why we're adding some height to the building is to is to screen um. Uh this not-quite-beautiful um rooftop unit and the steel that it's sitting on, so.
Well, um I I think I agree with um my colleagues here, that that um I do like to see revitalization. Um, I I do miss the bricks, I think, like Kathleen said. But I can understand that they are not your old-fashioned historic bricks. It is a modern um structure. So um, you know, it's it's reminding me that um. We, as a board, have always wanted to come up with some, you know, some further architectural guidelines. I hadn't thought about a modern building in the village, but I see there is one. So um, I I think um. I I I think we welcome revitalization here. Um, and with the lights, would all the lights point down? Except for the sign lights would be within the, within the sign or within the letters. Um but every other light will be pointing downward, right? Would they be dark sky compliant?
Yeah, the the light um at the at the far side on the depository, that's gonna be a a narrow spot, that's gonna just really shine light on the depository. Uh so um the light pollution will be very, very small to not at all.
Okay, alright, well, well, thank you for sharing that with us.
Benny, I I had I had a quick question, if I can.
Yes, please.
Derek, can you can you zoom in on on the rendering um, uh uh sort of where where the the main front citizen sign is? I I just had a question about kind of the treatment of the 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 edge of that um of that material. Sort of, you can kind of see it at the top, what what is that, what does that look like? Um, is that gonna be capped or anything, or is it kind of, you're gonna be able to see through the rain screen component?
Are are you asking the about the edge of the 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 channel letters?
No, the edge of the 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 panel siding.
Yeah, there's a return.
Echo skin, the echo skin.
The Oco, the Oco skin has a return. Um, it has a return and uh just looking to see where our detail of that is. Um. Here's the, here's the uh, well, uh I'm I'm gonna answer your question, but here's a diagram of of how that metal um perforated metal panel system works. So that they're gonna look like this, they're gonna be powder coated too, it'll be um a kind of um slightly beige-y color. And um. Yeah, not finding that detail, but the Oco skin will wrap around the corner for about a foot, so that you don't see the sides of the rain screen. And it does wrap here as well, back to the brick. Cause we didn't, we we thought about that, we didn't wanna see the side of the rain screen and the channels and all that stuff, you know?
No, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, sure, oh, here's a, here's a corner detail, whoops. Uh. This is, this looks like a uh a head detail of the system and. Um. But it's essentially, it's essentially gonna return something like this backwards.
Thank.
Yep, sure.
Is is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this?
We've left everybody speechless.
Yeah, I'm not seeing any hands raised, Denny.
Okay, that's great, is it, would the presenters like like to um um provide any further detail? Um, I'm wondering if I should close the public hearing, but I wanted to hear from anyone else who wanted to speak on this. So are the presenters um happy with what they've presented and ready to close the public hearing?
Yes, I just wanted to take the chance to say that we're really excited about this, we appreciate Derek's Derek and his team's work. Um but we're also just really excited to try to bring a a much nicer look. I I feel like it's overdue, we've sort of struggled with getting this thing going, and now we're we're really just excited to get it done. And I don't think we'll ever be the beautiful Baker Chocolate Factory or some of the other buildings around. But um short of the uh the limitations of the physical building that we have, I'm I'm thrilled and I'm happy to be a better neighbor because of it.
I think just screening the equipment on the roof is a huge, you know, huge bonus right there.
Yeah.
So Danny, then I'll make a motion to close the uh public hearing on thirty Adam Street Site Plan Approval.
Thank you. Anyone want a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Yes.
Aye, I think you have to roll call, but.
Oh, okay, uh uh Denny, yes, uh Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Okay, our meeting is, uh our public hearing has ended, now we move into discussion of the board.
Good, is, so the the board discusses the project further now, or what's the next?
Yes, yeah, the board discusses it now, and you can stay uh and listen, if you like. Um, okay, um Cheryl, do you have any further comments?
No, I mean, I I guess what I would say is that uh, you know, I would move to a a grant site plan approval. Um with a uh condition that um a light be added on the side of the building uh where the stair is. And that our our comments on signage be uh passed on to the uh Sign Review Committee. Um and that the applicant consider those comments uh before they attend that meeting with the Sign Review Committee. So that they can uh discuss that. Uh but that, given that we don't have the jurisdiction on that, uh that would just be uh my suggestion.
Okay, I I can agree with tho- those ideas. Um, uh Kathleen, uh did you have any further thoughts?
Um, no, I mean, as I said, you know, I recognize that the building itself is, you know, nineteen-sixties probably something. And and um and I certainly think that hiding the mechanicals on the roof is a huge improvement over what people can see there now. Um, and I know from, you know, going into and out of this building, that, you know, the the planters and everything are pretty much of a mess. So, you know, I I I like the improved look of the building, so. I think Cheryl's suggestions of mentioning to the Sign Review Committee are concerns about the the sizing of these things. Um is a good one, and and let's see what they go, and I, the addition of the light, I think is a good idea as well.
Yeah, it's it's interesting, because I'm thinking about the village as a whole, and I would be very disappointed if another building. Wanted to cover up, because it's probably less expensive to come up with a a shield or a cover than do the brickwork. But this particular building, restoring the brickwork wouldn't help us that much. Yeah, the just straight row of bricks.
Really restoring, yeah, you're not really restoring anything that's gonna be a real, you know, real moneymaker, yeah.
Yeah, so we can't change this building entirely. Um, so we're revitalizing it, improving it. Um, like he said, he wants to be a better neighbor, and he has to work with what he's got. Um, but we don't wanna set the precedent and have another one of these beautiful brick buildings, think that they can save some money and just throw up a. Besad, if you will, um but in this instance, I think it's an improvement, and we should always welcome improvements. Um, um, so, um.
Can I just say that it, my comment was not only about the size, but also about the the facelit letters. Um, kind of, and the idea of the the mixed-use overlay and kind of the pedestrian scale. So all of those comments would be the ones that I would like to to send um to the Sign Review Committee.
I I would agree with those, and I I um, yeah, I do agree. I I do leave it up to the Sign Review Committee, because I think they will have some great ideas, and they can really look in their bylaw. Um, for guidelines and and limits, because I I think it, on my first glance, it looks rather large. But I I think they would have a better sense of scale, cause they deal with signs all the time. Um, so, um, alrighty.
Rich, F S Rich.
Yeah, no, no, it's alright, no, it's okay, uh, no, I don't have, I don't have anything to add, I just, I, you know, I. Um Cheryl, I echo her comments, I I, you know, there's a difference between, there's lots of differences between these types of signs. They can be really nice looking, and they can be not so nice looking, and I'm sure they, these will be nice looking no matter what. Um, but they could, they do look rather large, and it could get bright, so. Yeah, I look forward to seeing what the uh Sign Committee comes up with.
Okay, and um did Tim or Allison want to add any um points to our discussion? There are other areas?
No, I I I think I think the board has raised a a lot of questions, I think the the sentiment that that everyone is kind of touching on is is the right one, and I agree with Derek's characterization. Um, you know, it's, it 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 is, you know, a modern building, um this is not, you know, Paul Revere's Citizens Bank. This is, you know, a Citizens Bank from from that era, so um I I think they're, the approach they're taking is good. And I think um, you know, it it's always nice to have, you know, a a a nice mix of architectural styles, even in a historic uh district. So I think um, you know, it's 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 a good step and a good improvement. Um, I I will convey, Cheryl, um your um uh your 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 comments to the Sign Review Committee. They're gonna look at this sign package um as it relates to the sign bylaw in terms of, you know, allowable size, allowable forms of illumination. So um those guys are very fastidious about this stuff. Um, so um, you know, I I I think we can expect a good outcome out of that process and 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 have a nicely. Uh nicely signed and a nicely designed uh building.
Excellent, A- Allison? I guess Allison is gonna stand.
I'm sorry, I was on mute, um.
That's okay, that's good.
I think it's a huge improvement over what's existing. Uh, I I think it'll it'll look great, especially hiding the mechanicals. I think that's the first thing you see when you're coming from lower mills, or uh, you know, to to get into Milton is that 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 big mass of mechanicals. So screening it is is fantastic.
I agree. Oh, that's plenty, that's a good point, and um I think um getting rid of that first garden. And improving the closer garden to the door will be an improvement. So I welcome positive re- revitalization, and um I accept the limits that we have. And I appreciate improving all the way up as far as we can with those limits. Um, so uh would anyone like to make a motion?
I thought Cheryl did have the motion.
I'm sorry? Would you wanna um repeat it, Cheryl?
Sure, that uh I'll make a motion that we grant site plan approval for the thirty Adam Street application. Uh with the condition that a light be added to the side of the building uh that would light the stair going down. And with the notation, though not condition, uh that uh we had comments that we've already discussed. That would be passed along to the Sign Review Committee, and that we would like the applicant to consider.
And could we request that the lights be all dark sky compliant? Um, it it doesn't seem to be an issue, cause they all seem to be pointing down, but just as a process.
I'll take that as a friendly amendment, sure.
Okay, thank you, okay, so that's, so anyone wanna second the motion?
Yeah, we'll second it.
Okay, uh all in favor, uh Rich?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
And Denny Swenson, yes?
Thank you, we look forward to the improvements.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nice to meet everybody here, thank you.
Yes, thank you for your diligence, it was a very thoughtful presentation.
Appreciate that.
Okay, have a great night.
You too.
Okay, um so now we'd like to move on to the second public hearing of five twenty-five, five twenty-four Adam Street.
Um, so I have just promoted Ned to panelist, um he should be joining us on the panel. Shortly, Ned, are you there?
I am here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
So um just by way of introduction, um this uh this precedes me, um but it doesn't precede a lot of you. Um, there was a site plan approval, and Ned can give you the exact date um back in twenty nineteen. Um for the five twenty-four um Adam Street uh building. Um, uh I I'll let Ned give the history, but but generally speaking, it was um improvements to that building to be able to install. Um an elevator um to get up to the second floor. to be able to install an elevator to get up to the second floor and some facade improvements. One of those improvements was to eliminate a, a, a glass door on the left side of the facade. And as the, the fit out has been going on, the tenant wants the door. So Ned, on behalf of his client, is, is applying for an amendment to that site plan approval to essentially go back to what is, is pretty much the existing condition as it relates to the door there. So that's probably more explanation than was necessary. So I'll, I'll pass it off, I'll pass it off to Ned for any, anything I missed.
Thank you, Tim, Madam Chair, members of the board, Ned Corcoran, on behalf of the Falcone Companies LLC, which is the owner of the building at five twenty-four, five thirty Adam Street in East Milton. As Tim said, in June of twenty nineteen, this board approved site plan approval for the redevelopment of that building, refit out, retenanting, key introduction of an elevator, handicapped accessibility, et cetera, so that the property could re, redeveloped. The building as it is the former Atlantic Insurance Building is commonly known. And this, Tim, if you want to go back to that, or Allison, go to the, right there.
It keeps moving on me, I'm sorry for whatever reason. It, it just keeps going, there we go, alright.
So this is the, it's the, it's the building that abuts the alleyway on the left. And the front door, the left front door was pre-existing and the plan at the time was to replace that door with a plate glass window. The new tenant, who's, one of the new tenants has requested that that window be replaced with a door. It actually provides better direct access to a stairwell that serves the first and second, the basement and second floor and the elevator, so it is really a new vestibule entryway. When the Falcones went to have the plans approved for building purposes, Mr. Prondak indicated that this would require an amendment to the site plan approval that was granted on June twenty-seven of two thousand and nineteen. And we had submitted essentially a set of plans that show, they're essentially the same as what were presented two years ago with the change in the facade, Plan Number Eight, Two Dot One shows the replacement of that window with a six foot door opening and, and entering into an entry vestibule that is then accessible to both the elevator and to the stairs. So with that, open it to questions. I was going to be joined, I would say I was going to be joined by Jeannie Falcone, who was unfortunately at the last minute unable to join us on behalf of her family. But this is a, there's an existing, what was the existing site plan? This was two separate lots, a land court lot in the rear and a, and a separate lot that was basically the entire building in the front. Property's been re-divided with portion of the, with parking area to the rear of the building and then a portion of the, of the open lot, which historically had a separate dwelling on it. That has been, the dwelling has been raised and, and those, those lots have been severed by a separate action of this board to approve, and approval not required plan, allowing the division of that lot. And that was done in the spring of two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, if, if you're ready to hear from board members?
Allison, can you bring up the proposed facade? Please, I was on the board at the time that we reviewed this original application. And I, I do recall, you know, there were a couple of changes to the elevations even during that process. So that, that again is from the original. So if you go back, Allison, to the folder that's in the proposed?
Yep, hold on.
Okay, and, and, well, basically, when, when she brings the drawing up, I, I have no problem with putting the door in that location in plan, it makes perfect sense. Wanting to make sure that you have a viable tenant on the second floor, I think is really important. You know, for the viability of properties, two-story properties, you know, in our business district there. So I absolutely have no trouble with this amendment, this, this proposal to amend this site plan approval.
I would say that the plans that have been presented here are actually clearer and crisper than the ones that were submitted.
Definitely, definitely.
My screen is frozen.
I mean, I've seen them, I just thought that maybe the public would want to see them, but I, I mean. Ned is absolutely correct, the plans are more, the drawings are more complete now than they were then, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, guys.
That's okay, that's okay. Kathleen, did you want to ask any questions or have any comments?
No, I mean, the door was there before, they're putting the door back, I, you know, really have an issue with that, it's, it's fine with me.
Okay, and Rich?
Uh, same.
Okay.
Yeah.
Keep a door a door instead of a window. I'm good, okay, alright. Did the applicant want to say anything further?
No, thank, all I'd say is thank you for your time and your consideration.
And I do.
Danny, can I, can I ask a quick question?
Oh, sure, I just don't want to forget the public, so, so go ahead, Tim, but don't let me forget the public.
I, I don't think anyone here would ever forget the public, Danny.
Of course you wouldn't, of course I wouldn't.
I, I just had a quick question for Ned and, and I, 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 I don't have the plans in front of me, unfortunately, and I'm not going to ask Allison to, to dig through. You know, you, you, you talked about the, the doors kind of creating a vestibule condition. Is there any change inside, inside the building that you can describe as a result of, of this being a door instead of a window? Or is it just literally, you know, the, the, the inside condition's the same, it's just there's a door instead of a window?
The inside condition is almost identical previously. There are two doors, we're going back from one center door to two doors, one on the center, one on the left. And that center, the left provides better access to the tenant taking possession of the second floor.
So what we're looking at on the screen is what we approved previously. So Allison, if you could go to your arrow back to the folder?
Yep.
And out of, out of this folder, go back further.
Okay.
Now, yes. And I think there might be a plan in this set as well that would answer, maybe answer Tim's question. Is that there, is it not in this file? Alright, maybe it was a different file, sorry, in that folder.
Okay.
Amended site plan should have been it.
Yeah, that's.
Well, you're looking for the map, I'm just gonna see if there's anyone from the public just.
Allison, when, when, when you hit next there, you're cycling through all of the documents in the folder. You're not cycling through a single document itself. So you need to go back, click on amended site plan and then you should be able to scroll through the page, so if you scroll down, you'll go through the pages.
There you go.
If you go to the next page, it's actually clearer.
There we go.
Essentially identical, except that this is crisper and neater in his presentation.
Yeah, I mean, I did look at it and compare the two. At first, it looked different to me because it is, there is more information here, but the difference really is the nature of putting the door back and how it changes the window configuration as a result.
But are the windows on the second floor, are they bigger than the ones that were on the earlier?
No, the, the windows on the second floor are identical to what was previously approved.
But they are bigger than the, than what was there before.
Then what, than the existing?
Yes, I think the, the, the second floor treatment is different than what is existing.
Right.
But the windows as shown on the plan are identical to the windows.
Right, right, well, I just was just kind of commenting that those windows are, on, on the new design, in addition to the door, the, the windows are bigger than the existing.
Take that, by a little bit, yes.
Yeah.
We approved that before on the second.
Yeah, which makes it nicer, I mean, we have, we know that for, you know, our prior, you know, planning director had pointed out that many of the, much of the office space in the, in East Milton and in, in Milton in general doesn't comply with, you know, with ADA compliance and it doesn't sort of meet any kind of standard for any prime office space. So any improvement we can make to those second level office spaces in the East Milton area are great to see.
I agree, I think bigger windows are better, it costs more money, but I think they add more light and, and a better experience inside. So it's great when they can, when someone can do that for that area of town or anywhere. Okay, is, is there anyone from the public? I don't see anyone from the public who, who would like to comment on this or any questions? We really only, okay, alright, anyone want to move to close the public hearing?
I would move to close the public hearing on the amendment to the site plan approval for whatever the address is. Five twenty-four Adams Street.
Okay, sounds good, so Rich Beeler? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Cheryl Togias?
Yes.
Denny Swenson, yes? Alright, okay, so now it's our public hearing, I mean, our, our discussion. We've closed our public hearing and now it's the discussion of the board. Does anyone have anything further to say?
No.
Nope.
Okay, I'm happy to hear a, if someone wants to move, make a movement.
I would move.
Danny, can I, can I, Danny, can I just chime in there real quick?
Yes, please.
Ned has provided a, a draft decision, I don't know if you had a chance to read that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
If people, if people are comfortable with that, you may want to just vote to, to, to approve that and we can kind of get that out the door relatively quickly. Or if you want to take a little more time.
I did look at it earlier, I did look at it earlier and I'm fine, but I don't have it in front of me.
So Allison can do that top where she was scrolling at the upper right there, she can move on to it. I think in those arrows on the right where it says previous to or five next, if you do it next.
Oh, I see.
In the down button.
Yeah.
I read it, I, I didn't have any trouble with it.
Okay.
Except that I think we've been advised to, this is technical, but have middle initials with our names. When I was chair before, town council had advised that, so that's a minor thing, but to be consistent, I guess.
Well, I always use a middle initial, that's in my signature, so yes, it should be there.
Okay.
Okay.
But other than that, I, I didn't, I didn't see any problem with this.
So what we would have was a motion to approve the grant of the modification of the, you could scroll up so I have the title of it. Modification to site plan approval for five twenty-four, five thirty Adams Street and the decision as submitted by the applicant's attorney.
Second.
Hey, Rich? Do, I'm, I'm sorry, so we need to do a roll call?
Yep.
Okay, so Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Cheryl Togias?
Yes.
Jenny Swenson, yes? So, thank you very much, Ned Corcoran.
Thank you very much, I did submit it, I think in Word form, so I need to insert the middle initials. I think Tim could do, Allison could do that easily, thank you very much.
You don't want to have a problem with the registry of deeds when you go to record and I sign with an M and it's not there.
I have enough issues with the registry of deeds from time to time. What, you want me to record these plans? I can't record these plans. Attached to the, anyway, thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you, have a good night. Okay, alright, so we have, I think we, well, no, it's Tim is going to talk to us about the MAPC Technical Assistance Application. So. That's our new business.
Thank you, Danny.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
Um, so the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, as, as everyone's familiar with, is the, the Regional Planning Agency. They do an annual technical assistance grant program. Cheryl, I, I, I have a feeling that Milton Village started with a MAPC Technical Assistance Grant, am I wrong about that?
You are not wrong, it did.
So, you know, the, the, a snowflake falls on a mountain and rolls down and becomes new zoning. So.
Oh, it was only that easy.
There was a lot of pushing that happened, I suppose. So, so, so i- i- it's, it's that, it's that type of thing, but it's a lot of other different types of things. It really is an opportunity for, for towns to get technical assistance for all manner of, of different sort of planning efforts. Sometimes it's, sometimes it sort of is, is about zoning, sometimes it's about transportation, it can be about a lot of different things. It, it really is meant to be kind of, you know, I don't want to use the term loose because they, they, they like to give grants based on, you know, what their regional planning priorities are and what the Commonwealth's priorities are. But so there's, there's, there's a funding round open right now and, you know, looking through the solicitation for, for grant funding and, and some of the priorities that MAPC has in their, in, in their draft regional plan that they're working on, it, it kind of lined up with some stuff that, that our offices have been hearing in terms of, there's two vacancies on the Fair Housing Committee. The town has a fair housing committee, it's had a fair housing committee since nineteen seventy-eight. That committee meets infrequently. Their, their charge is, is from nineteen seventy-eight and is, is relatively kind of out of date. I'm, I'm not entirely, you know, I, I'm technically the fair housing officer for the town of Milton. I've never been called upon to, to do anything, fortunately or unfortunately. So there has been some, some, some greater interest in fair housing issues in town. We've gotten more than a couple, you know, questions about potentially filling those vacancies and kind of questions, you know, what does the fair housing committee do? You know, how can I get involved, I'm interested in these issues? And so I, I wanted to use the opportunity to get some, some help from the Regional Planning Agency to kind of, you know, essentially do a little research and, and do a little bit of an inquiry into, you know, what, what are, what are other towns' fair housing committees doing? What are some of the activities that they engage in? What are the roles or responsibilities that they have? Is there a model for, you know, an active, you know, engaged fair housing committee? And, you know, because it, it's, the, 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 the charge that they're kind of tasked with, again, it's from nineteen seventy-eight, it, it kind of deals with issues that we, we had back in the seventies. Unfortunately, we do have some of the same issues, but there are new ones. And so, you know, this, this grant application is really about kind of figuring out what the best practices are for fair housing committees and, you know, trying to figure out, you know, where the, the Milton Fair Housing Committee fits in, you know, the ecosystem of, you know, local, you know, town and, and nonprofit advocacy, advocacy housing groups. You know, we have an Affordable Housing Trust now. We're going to have a CPA committee that's going to have a housing, you know, component to it. The Select Board has a, a housing subcommittee. The Planning Board and the Mass Planning Population Committee are, are, are engaged more in housing issues. And so we want to figure out how the fair housing committee fits into that ecosystem and, and, you know, potentially, you know, have an opportunity for, for folks to be engaged in those specific fair housing issues. So again, this is an opportunity to get, you know, free money and, and to get help, you know, from folks who have their finger on the pulse of, of all the hundred-plus, you know, communities in greater Boston. So MAPC likes to have municipal support for these applications, so it's not just some rogue planning director sending an application. some rogue planning director sending an application, but it's actually doing something that the town, uh, wants to do. So, um, we asked the select board, uh, last night to, um, support this, um, this effort. Allison, did they vote to support this?
Yes, they did.
Unfortunately. Wonderful. Thank you.
I thought Allison turned into a cat.
Yeah, no, that's, um, that's Giacomo. He's hungry. Um, we'll have to, we'll have to fix that somehow. Um, so the, the select board last night voted to support this application. Um, all I'm asking tonight is, is if, if the planning board is interested in me pursuing this to, uh, take a formal vote to support this so that I can credibly put in our application that the planning board supports it. Um, but I think if, if we do get this grant funding, um, you know, it's, it's a nice little project um, that could potentially have a, a, a big impact if we can get, you know, on, on one end of the spectrum, a revitalized and reinvigorated fair housing committee. Um, and maybe on the other side of the spectrum, maybe what we come up with is actually, you know, local fair housing committees are, are, you know, passe and there are other ways to kind of deal with these issues. Um, you know, we, we are members of a regional fair housing coalition. Um, you know, with, uh, with other members of, of the South Shore Home Consortium. So, you know, there, there is the possibility that maybe we say, actually, you know, maybe this is the regional issue that, you know, we collaborate or work with other towns on. Um, so, you know, I, I, I think there's a whole spectrum of outcomes here, but, um, I, I think it will be good to get help from the Regional Planning Agency. So, um, that's what we're dealing with and I'd love to have your support for it.
Okay. Um, so I'll, I'd like to move it to a discussion. Um, so, uh, does, would anyone like to, uh, start the discussion? Uh, Cheryl or Kathleen or Rich?
I would just say that I, I read through, uh, the proposal and it makes a lot of sense to me. And, uh, I think it, it, it makes a lot of sense actually in this, um, where we are in terms of social justice issues that fair housing, uh, would, um, be something to, to look at how this fair housing committee, uh, can work or if it's better, as Tim said, to roll those, um, responsibilities into something else. Um, but having it just sit there and languish and not meet, uh, doesn't seem the right thing. So I'm, I'm happy to support it.
Okay. Uh, Kathleen?
Well, I mean, I, you know, I think we, and we certainly do have an issue about fair housing, you know, here in, in the town and the, and of course, the Affordable Housing Committee has been talking about it, but fair housing is kind of like a sort of a broader issue than affordable. Um, and, and has sort of a different, you know, th- there's sort of one making sure that whoever we have in these affordable units, when they ever get built, um, you know, are, we are following the right procedures to make sure that our tenant, the tenants and the purchasers, you know, have satisfied the fair housing requirements. So sort of once you get these things built, you know, this fair housing committee may have a role in making sure that, you know, that the marketing is done right and that the, you know, the, the diversity that we, is achieved through all kinds of advertising and outreach and all that sort of thing. So, you know, they may have a role and, but as Tim said, I mean, they also may find out that it's duplicated by twenty other committees we already have. So I think it's an important idea to take a look at, see what, what our, you know, our moribund committee has now and what we could possibly do better.
Great. Thank you. And, and Rich, do you have any thoughts?
No, no, I mean, it, I mean, it makes sense to me. So I'm for it.
Okay, great. Uh, I, I just want to applaud our staff for, um, looking for resources, um, to come up with creative, uh, solutions and have healthy, robust discussions. Um, fair housing and affordable housing is something that's, uh, going to be a huge issue for us for a while to come. Um, so I am in full favor of, um, supporting you, Tim and Allison on, on this and, uh, you're, you're supporting us. So thank you. Thank you for taking the initiative. Uh, um, so would anyone like to make a motion?
Um, I would make a motion to support the application.
Okay. Um, anyone want to second it?
Second.
Okay. Uh, all in favor, Rich?
Yes, sorry. It wasn't.
That's okay. Uh, 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 Cheryl?
Yes.
Uh, Kathleen?
Yes.
And Denny?
Yes.
Um, okay. So we are.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Tim. Of course. Thank you. Um, okay. So old business. Uh, we have two topics, uh, forty B hearings and, um, housing production strategies. And let's see, how are we doing? My goodness, it's eight forty-five. So we're in good shape. So, um, so I'm interested to hear, uh, I haven't been able to attend the Zoom, um, uh, ZBA meetings, but I have been able to poke in and watch some of them on cable access later or after the fact. Um, but I'm most interested to hear, um, if, um, so, uh, Tim, you might have a better understanding on the agenda. Was this to, you know, compare notes on what we saw at the public hearings? Or is there something new that, um, you wanted to tell us about the forty B?
So I, I, I think, I think there were three kind of primary, um, items that, that maybe, um, the board may want to discuss. One is, and I think the, the kind of the big one, um, right now is there's been a, um, a revised, um, concept for the five eighty-two Blue Hill Avenue, um, forty B project. Um, y- you can, you can sort of rattle through that, um, in a minute, but I, I, I think, I think the main kind of gist is that, um, the applicant has, has taken to heart the, the town and the neighborhood and everyone, quite frankly, everyone's desire to see, um, preservation of, of the, the, uh, the historic gardens and, um, and the existing mansion. Um, and so the, um, the, the new co, the new site design, you know, uh, largely achieves that, uh, preservation goal. Um, and then there are other, um, there's a reduction in, in unit count. Um, there's a, you know, the, the split, um, of, of the large building into two smaller buildings. Um, so, um, this is something that, uh, the applicant presented, uh, in a preliminary fashion last week. Um, and is going to be back, um, I forget the date now. Um, it's towards the end of the month is, is when the hearing has been continued to, um, to present more detailed architectural drawings, um, and, and updates to their stormwater and, and traffic plans. So, um, that'll be, um, I, I think that would be something that, um, the board would be interested in, um, if not taking part in, at least, at least viewing, um, that hearing just to kind of get a, a feel for, um, you know, the new details because, um, you know, for, for all intents and purposes, the old, you know, as applied for project is, um, is, is out, um, and this one is, is in. Um, so that, that was one item that the board may want to talk about. Um, you know, another is, um, a, um, the, the six forty-eight Canton Ave, uh, hearing has started. Um, and I think there was a, a notion, um, for, for the board to, um, potentially look at some of the, um, some of the existing trees on that site, um, and, and decide, you know, is, is this something that the board is interested in? Um, doing a little more digging and analysis on further, um, and, and providing further comment on that. Um, and then finally, um, on the Ice House, um, public hearing, um, we have, um, in our hands, and there was a presentation again last week of the, um, design peer review. Um, and so that's something that, um, you can, if you haven't seen that hearing, you can go back and see that presentation from, uh, Cliff Bomer from Davis Square Architects, who is the Board of Appeals, um, design peer reviewer. Um, we're waiting on presentations and those will happen, um, next week and then the following week. Um, from the peer reviews from, uh, Tetra Tech, uh, which is the firm that's doing the engineering peer review. And then, uh, Van Essen Associates, which is doing the traffic peer review. Um, so, um, i- if the board wanted to talk through that design peer review or perhaps, um, wait until the rest of them come in and, and, you know, decide, um, if, if you want to, um, come into that hearing and provide some additional testimony based on those peer reviews or write up additional comments or, um, you know, whatever, whatever tactic, uh, the board decides that it wants to do. I, I will say, um, you know, just in my kind of interpretation, um, that Ice House hearing is going, smoother than the other ones. Um, and I'm, I'm not making, you know, a value judgment i- in that sense. I just mean that, um, there's not a lot of, um, not as much up for debate on that. Um, you know, there are some, there are some issues that came up in the design peer review. As I'm sure there'll be issues that come up in the other peer reviews, but, um, nothing as, as monumental as we're seeing on, on Canton Ave and Blue Hill Ave. So, um, that, that is one that I, I anticipate will be probably moving, um, towards a decision before the other two. Um, so, um, that just may be something the board wants to talk about, how it wants to involve itself in that hearing if, if at all. So those are those three issues. Um, it's a general agenda item. So if, if, you know, if there's something else that comes up, you can have at it. But, um, those are, those are the things that I was thinking, uh, the board might want to discuss.
Thank you. I think it's a great idea to have that on our agenda tonight. And, um, I wanted to see if, um, if my fellow, uh, board members wanted to talk about, um, anything interesting that they've seen in, um, the meetings. I know I, I haven't been able to attend a lot of them. I had some, um, family illness to deal with. Um, but I, I mentioned I watched a few of these, um, ZBA meetings and the big takeaway for me is the water issues, um, on both projects. Um, and the scale, you know, as we've already talked about a lot, is, is totally out of scope. But to put, um, something so huge that, that's a size probably larger than Milton Hospital or the high school on top of these water issues on, on either side and, and beneath, um, is, um, just shows you that this, the scope and the scale is, is just t- too much for this, for this plot of land. Um, it, it does not fit in the topography. Um, so anyway, I, I think, um, that you are aware of my, my concerns on this. Um, and I, I do want to see if, what your thoughts are on how best we, the planning board, uh, can help steer this in a positive direction if, if you, if you have th- had thoughts on this. Um, so I open it up.
So, Denny, I just want to ask one thing. I, you know, in watching, um, not all of five eighty-two, but a number of them and watching some, a- against some of the Ice House and then the first one of six forty-eight, uh, Canton Ave. I do think that each chair on each board is actually handling the hearings differently. And what I heard, um, the chair of the six forty-eight Canton Ave say on Tuesday evening was that he viewed the, uh, Board of Appeals as a neutral arbiter and that there would be, uh, the town would present evidence and, um, applicant would present evidence and then they would make a decision based on what they hear i- is a compilation of all the evidence. And so while the board has submitted a, you know, comment letter initially on the project eligibility and then we submitted comment letters based on what was filed with the Board of Appeal. In some cases, it was very similar to what was filed originally, but like in the case of the Ice House, it had changed, you know, a fair amount, right? And then, you know, we submitted our scale and massing analysis with those. Um, but you know, when they're hearing test, when they're hearing a presentation and seeing a presentation from the applicant and then they're hearing testimony from peer review folks and then none of it is, um, well, the peer review in terms of, um, let's say I saw for, I saw the five eighty-two one and, you know, the architect was still almost unable to provide one. He just found it to be so, uh, I, I don't want to use, I, I don't have the exact words in front of me, but basically he's saying this was one of the most out of scale projects he's ever seen and he does his peer reviews all the time. And so I guess what I, I wonder for us is, you know, how much of a participant do we want to be in these discussions or can we be in these discussions? And it might vary by each board. So I'm wondering if Tim, in his conversations with the Board of Appeal, can help me with this a little bit in terms of how they're handling it differently and how the board can, can help the town because the Board of Appeal members are all attorneys and nothing against you Kathleen and all you attorneys. But, you know, it's not, uh, it's not the same as having, um, you know, kind of analysis that, you know, that we can provide in terms of, uh, you know, the, the scale and issues such as trees and, um, appropriateness for the context and stuff like that. So, Tim, can you give me your thoughts on what I've just said here and what you've participated in thus far?
Yeah. Um, so, so what, what, what I'll say is, um, you know, the, you know, everyone's got their own, um, style. I, I think, you know, one of the reasons why, um, um, you know, Judy Barrett was brought on board, um, you know, via a grant from, from Mass Housing Partnership is to really, um, you know, to, to the extent that, that it's possible, you know, to, to impose as much consistency on these hearings as, as, as we can. Um, you know, understanding that, that everyone kind of has their, their own different touches and, and their own kind of preferred ways of going about things. But we do want to make sure that, um, you know, that, you know, th- things are, are, are being treated in a, in a consistent way. And so, um, you know, she is in, you know, frequent contact with, with all three of those gentlemen who are, who are chairing those panels. And so, um, you know, hopefully, um, you know, we're not seeing, you know, one hearing go, you know, in, in one totally different direction than the other one. So, um, you know, that, that's something that, that she's kind of got a hand on the tiller on. But in terms of, you know, how the board, um, you know, wants to be involved, you know, Cheryl, you were there for, for the six forty-eight Canton Ave hearing and, um, what, what I think Brian Hurley, the chair, is, is attempting to do in that hearing is, is to really, you know, um, im- im- impose as much order as, as possible in terms of, you know, this is, this is what we're going to be doing at the next hearing. This is what we're going to be doing at the hearing after that. This is going to, we're going to be doing at the, at the third hearing. And so I think, um, you know, that's, that's just, that's, that's the way that that board is approaching the issue. And I think there's going to be, you know, an opportunity to, um, you know, um, let me, how, how do I want to put this? So, um, I, I think in that particular hearing, I think it would be good for the board to, we've got, we've got three sort of topic area hearings coming up um, on, on traffic, design and, and engineering. Um, I think it would be appropriate for the planning board to, to review those peer review reports, to, to watch those hearings and then at the, at the sort of the, it would be the, the, the fifth hearing, um, but it would be the, the, the fourth in that line of traffic, design, um, engineering. Um, the Board of Appeals is looking for town testimony in that, in that following hearing. And I think, um, it would be probably best for the planning board to, you know, take all of those peer review reports in. Um, you know, take in all of the testimony that comes in those topic area, um, you know, discussions. And, you know, to the extent that you want to either supplement or reinforce or, or change, um, the comments that you made initially in, in your written testimony. Um, I think, you know, the, the role of the planning board in, in this case, and, and Cheryl, you're right, they're all attorneys. Um, and I think it's, it's, um, there, there's a lot of ways in which it's good to have, um, a panel of attorneys. This is, you know, um, if, if, if things go south, they, they, these things end up in court and you want to have nice, tight decisions in that way. But, um, you know, the, the, the other side of that is that, you know, they're, they, they don't have the planning sensibility that, that a planning board may. Um, and so I think that, that type of testimony, um, will be very useful to them. So I think in, in, in the six forty-eight Canton Ave instance, I think, you know, taking those peer review reports in and we've got the traffic peer report and we're, we're looking, we're looking to get the next ones. I think they're coming in next week. Um, and, and, and offer, you know, commentary based on that. I think for the other hearings, um, you know, five eighty-two Blue Hill Ave, um, is a little bit more of, um, you know, because that was the first hearing that kind of got out of the boat. Um, we had some hiccups in terms of, um, you know, getting the peer reviews under contract. So that hearing's been going on for, for, for quite a bit. Um, and, and, you know, I, I think, you know, the planning board I'm sure has wanted to, to, to get in there. Um, you know, it's a little bit. the planning board I'm sure has wanted to, to, to get in there. You know, it's a little bit more of a moving target now that we've got a new design. And so I think what, what I'll, what I'll try to do is, is touch base with, with the chair and with Judy. And kind of figure out, you know, okay, the next, the next hearing is going to be, you know, a more detailed presentation on the new design in terms of, you know, again, architectural details and, and updates to their stormwater plan. You know, we'll want to get additional town testimony in, you know, very shortly after that. Just because, you know, I, I do think that the board needs to hear from, from the planning board and from the town, you know, before we get to the kind of the, the decision stage. I know, you know, Kathleen has expressed, you know, in previous meetings that something that the planning board may want to do is, is suggest, you know, appropriate conditions on, on an eventual approval. I do think it's appropriate to, to kind of get in before that. And then, you know, you know, based on your expertise and, and your experience with, you know, site planning, you know, to, to get your testimony and your comments in, to, to really, you know, try to push that project in, in, in the best direction possible. So that was long and, and rambly, and I hope it answered your question, Cheryl.
Yeah, I, I, that helps quite a bit, Tim. And I was just wondering what your thoughts are, the same kind of thoughts about Ice House? Because I did note in the peer review letter, the architects kind of suggested flipping the plan so that the parking lot would be facing kind of the neighbor, the single family residential neighbor. And the building would be on, let's say, if I call towards Mattapan North and I call towards that single family South, it would sort of flip the L. Is that, did I read that correctly? Is that the way you read that?
That, I, that's, that's how I read that as well. Yeah.
And I guess I'd like to, if they're going to entertain that, I would definitely like to see something three dimensional of that. And it doesn't have to be detailed architecture, but it's more massing. And, you know, how close does it put the parking and headlights potentially to that house? Because I do appreciate the concern that the building is somewhat close to that single family. However, it's only two and three stories at that point. So, you know, it's not that dissimilar at that point to a house. And I'm just a little worried about a big parking lot being adjacent to the single family instead. So I, I guess if they're going to study that, I think the planning board should continue to look at that planning.
Yeah, I would agree.
Sorry, I, I was muted there, Cheryl. I, I think that's, I, I think that's definitely a, a good ask. You know, I, I, I think the, the way that hearing is going, it's still going to sort of go in order. We've done the design peer review next week. We're doing, I forget which one it is, whether traffic or, or engineering. So again, there, there may be an opportunity to kind of offer a comprehensive set of kind of updated comments. Or, you know, it may even kind of be maybe more appropriate to have someone come in and, and, and speak, you know, directly, just, you know, given, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll try to have a meeting so that the board can kind of discuss its thoughts on that project. And then, you know, rather than write something up in a formal way, maybe, you know, the board can send someone to, to convey those issues. So I think,
I disagree with the idea, Tim. I disagree with the idea of an informal presentation or sort of, I, you know, I, I've, I've attended hundreds of 40B hearings. And I think it's important for the planning board to provide guidance or whatever information to the zoning board. And, and my view of it is that we would be providing comments and particularly proposed conditions. And I know there's been a lot of discussions about this, but you even, even when you do a denial of a permit, you include conditions. So a denial of a permit is not just like, oh, no, we're not going to give this. On a 40B, you put in, even in a denial, you put in there all the things that you would consider as conditions. And then there is a vote at the end, which says whether or not you're going to grant the permit. But it's not, you know, on a 40B, you just don't go, oh, sorry, forget it, see you later. You put in those conditions so that when it goes up on appeal, the HAC has something to look at. So, so even if, even if some people thought that the project should be denied, we would still have planning board comments in writing that says, you know, here's the thing, we've looked at A, B, C, and D. And we would, you know, we would recommend a condition on, on this and a recommended condition on that and recommend another condition for this. And as I said, that's whether it gets approved or denied. So I think the boards, the zoning board chairs, I, I admit the fact that they're all lawyers, which is interesting because I think our bylaw says that the zoning board is supposed to be made up of a variety of professions, not all attorneys. But that's not the way in practice it works here. But I think it's important for us, since they are all attorneys, as Cheryl pointed out, to, to provide the kind of information and conditions and thought process that goes through the planning board when you're doing site plan approval or you're doing a special permit, you know, like wood mirror or, you know, all the ones that you've done before. And it's, I think, important to put it in writing.
Yeah, Kathleen, I, I actually, I don't disagree with that. I, I guess what I, what, what I'm saying is to the extent that, you know, the, the board can get in there before, you know, so, so for example, I, I mean, ju- just to sort of, you know, it may not need to be a condition if the board can influence the project to, to change in that direction before we get to that point. I guess, you know, is, is,
Council allowed you to do sort of work sessions? I mean, you know, lots of times zoning boards do, you know, or staff, whatever, do work sessions with the applicant. And sometimes a planning board member in there when they're doing it, to sort of have a work session before the meeting that says, okay, fine. You know, you've got this, you know, a real working session. That might be helpful.
I, 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 I think in, in one form or another, each of the panels, well, I, I can't really speak for, for Canton Ave because we just started. But I think on Ice House and, and 582, I think, you know, we're moving in that direction. I think it's more, you know, you know, making sure that the peer reviews are presented in full. And then I think, you know, once that happens, you know, it's kind of, you know, all right, go off and, 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 you know, put your heads together. So, you know, again, if, if, if there's an opportunity there, if the planning board wants to be involved, that's definitely, you know, a request that could be made. I'm just trying to sort of manage, you know, just from a scheduling and timing perspective.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I can't, I can't imagine how, how hard this is. I mean, I really can't.
Well, yeah. And, 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 and it's just, you know, if, if the planning board wants to discuss in open session, kind of, you know, what their thoughts on the Ice House are, it just depends, all right, when's the next hearing of the, of the, of the Board of Appeals? And then is it, is it formal written comments or is it, you know, we send someone, you know, to deliver comments orally? But I do think, you know, at the end of the day, when we reach the end of each of these processes, I, I think it's definitely, you know, if the planning board sees things that, that it feels, you know, needs to be, you know, in a decision, you know, I, I, I think the planning board should go ahead and, and definitely do that. So I don't think we're, I think we're all on the same page on that.
Yeah. What we don't have right now, what we don't have right now is a, is a, you know, is a discussion between, you know, with Rich and April and me and Denny and Cheryl over when I sit on those hearings, I've been sitting on most of them. You know, I can't say, well, the planning board says X because we haven't talked about it.
Yeah, but we said, Kathleen, when we, we talked about this at one of our meetings where we said, we could speak at any one of the meetings, we authorized each other to do it, as long as it was consistent with the letters and the comment letters that we had submitted in the, in the graphic packages.
Yeah, but right now we've got, we've got two projects. We have a project that looks completely different than what we commented on.
That's definitely different. Yes, I absolutely agree with that. We have to talk about the new ones because we haven't done that. But on the ones, like, I got a message like in 582 Blue Hill Ave, like the day of or the day before, when they were having the architecture peer review comment and asking if I was going to be speaking on behalf of the planning board at that meeting. And I said, no, because we hadn't discussed it, you know? But then that's why I brought it up before to say, you know, there's so many hearings, we can't, well, it's hard for all of us to be at all of them, right? So if, if one of us could speak for at least what we've already decided in our comments, then we should do it. Because otherwise we may not have the opportunity, you know, as Tim said, the scheduling is very difficult. So.
Well, Cheryl, I, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I, I'm not sure, in, in reference at least to the Ice House, we, we did have an opportunity and, and I think that's how the parking ended up, where it ended up because we were concerned about the massing of the parking being towards that single family. And we restructured it because, Denny, I don't know if you remember, we, we talked about them preserving those three large trees at the front of the lot.
So Alison, that happened after the project eligibility, before they filed with the Board of Appeal. And what they did was we suggested that they put the new building approximately where the existing buildings were. And so they did do that. And we commented on that in the letter that we sent to the Board of Appeal. But the, now though, the peer review architect has suggested kind of mirroring that. So not putting the parking in the back, but changing the, like the L, right? You know what I mean?
Yep, yep.
So that, so, you know, I, these are the kinds of changes that I think the planning board should discuss and provide an opinion on because they're big. They're big changes. And the same kind of thing at 582 where there's a new proposal. You know, that's like, we should, we should provide some guidance to the, the Board of Appeals on what we think about that from, you know, from our perspective as a planning board, because we would be reviewing that sort of thing normally if it weren't a 40B. And so this is, you know, we can't obviously, I mean, if we want to speak individually at those hearings, I suppose we can about what we think. But I do think we can speak on behalf of the board for the original, what's the original filings, like for 648, because there's no new design yet. And for East Milton, when we get to that, because there's no new design there yet, right? But.
Yeah. So, so Cheryl, I, I think one would be, so two things. And this may be news or, or not. There, there's, there's been a, a new sort of conception of, of how these things are going to be scheduled. And it may be helpful to sort of conceive of, of, of how we want to move forward. The, the original concept was, all right, you know, we're going to try and get through 582. And then we're going to try to get through Ice House. And then we're going to try to get through Canton Ave, et cetera, et cetera. That's, that's just not in the cards. And so the way that the Board of Appeals is kind of approaching this now is just Tuesdays for Canton Ave, Wednesdays for Blue Hill Ave, Thursdays for Ice House. And, and we'll get East Milton in there somehow soon. And so that's kind of, you know, those days are, are slotted for those. And so you may see, you know, every Wednesday, there'll be a hearing on, on, on Blue Hill Avenue. Or they may, you know, extend out for two weeks or three weeks. But that, that's going to be the general sort of gist. You do have the,
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I just wanted to write that down. So Tuesday is what and what?
Denny, let me email that to the, to the board because I'm, I'm almost 100% certain that I'm right in that. But I, I want to, I want to make sure. So, so you, you've got the, the general sort of scheme for the, the redesigned 582 here. In a couple of weeks, they're going to be presenting more detailed architectural diagrams and an updated stormwater system. So it may be helpful just for the board to maybe take some time to get some initial thoughts together, you know, about what they think generally of this scheme. And then kind of maybe refine those comments once we have some more details on that. You know, I think this is a, a, a great time to do that.
If you want to pull that up, I mean, obviously saving the existing gardens and the existing house is something that we felt was important. I, I do have concerns about the scale of the building being attached in the way that it's attached to the existing house. You know, there is a way to do it where there's a little bit of a gap. So, I mean, if we want to talk about initial comments on it, but you, maybe you would want Alison to pull up the drawings. But I'm also happy to wait until they, we would watch that, the, the next hearing where they go into more detail about it.
Well, there was an interesting, I mean, there was sort of interesting comments about that. We did talk about the fact that they wanted them to save the gardens and we wanted them to save the house. But then the landscape peer reviewer said, you got this massive building next to the garden. How is it going to get any light? You know, so, so it was like, oh.
Funny, that's terrible.
So, so it was like, well, yeah, you're two steps ahead and one step back, you know? Oh, yeah.
Well, and again, but everything's been adopted. Well, and there's a trade off, right? So then I would suggest, I, I know there's trees that, that form a buffer along Blue Hill Avenue. But they could take the west building and orient it towards the street and pull it away from the gardens. And then you wouldn't get the shadowing on the gardens that you would get in its current location. Right? So if you look like north, I mean, the reality is okay. So north, that building is mostly going to send its shadows. In the morning, it's going to send them towards Blue Hill Avenue. And then in the afternoon, it's going to send them towards that parking lot. But in the later afternoon, it will send them onto the garden. But so will the north building because it's tall. It'll, those shadows will reach over that existing house. So I would suggest we ask for a shadow study. Tim knows this from Boston.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, you got to have a shadow study, right? And then I would say, look at moving the west building to Blue Hill Avenue. And what does that do for improvements to the garden?
And then you're going to have people saying, well, wait a minute, what about the trees? They don't want to lose those trees.
Well, but I understand you can still, you can leave a buffer still, I think. You know, the, I mean, my personal opinion is if they knocked some more units off of this, they can get a decent site plan that accomplishes, you know, both tree buffers and not shadowing the gardens and the house.
I hate to ask this stupid question, but how do you get to watch this stuff on, on the meet, the hearings that you've missed?
Through Milton Access TV.
On, on your, on your computer? Okay.
Yeah, it's on through their website.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, you haven't had to watch any of our tapes.
Are you, let me tell you, I'd rather shoot myself than miss that. Oh.
Watch it again? Oh, my God.
After I watch our tapes, I say, how does anybody watch our meetings?
I, let me tell you, when I had my, when my boyfriend lived here and he went off to one of our meetings, he came back and he said, if I had your life, I'd kill myself.
Well, here's what I'm talking about in terms of that collision of that big building against the house. Or, well, I think this, you know, like I said, it's, they're saving the house and the gardens here. That's an improvement. But they, there's some other things that I, I think they could consider here. Like, for example, if you go back to the site plan on this.
Hold on.
They have parking up against that building, which is dictating that the building has, they only have so much room, right? And they made the length of the building long, so long that they're pinched at the upper right. But if they stepped the building at least a third of the way down and, and removed some of that parking and shifted the building over to the right and had more like a glass link or a narrow link to the existing building, it would provide a little more space for the existing house to, to sit in. And they could put some of that parking in back instead of on the side there if they really need to have that parking. So.
Cheryl, I, I, I don't know if you remember, and, and part of what you're seeing here and, and just kind of was, it was one of the pathologies of, of the original concept is this is still one underground parking garage. So this L shape is, is connected underground. And so I think that's also kind of driving a lot of, you know, what you're seeing. So, you know, not, not an excuse, but I think it's an explanation for, for why it's kind of shaped the way it is.
Yeah, but I would say that, look, they've got an elevator and two stairs in the, in the building on, that they call West. And they've got two stairs and two elevators in the building on the right. So they don't need, oftentimes you have one building because you're consolidating your, that infrastructure. All they're getting by connecting it underground is some more parking spaces underneath the drop off course. And so, you know, they're basically for all intents and purposes, why not have just a garage under each building and not have them connected under that? Even if it meant having a few more at the surface, I would think it would be worth studying, you know, in, you know, massing and plan view. Not detailed view. I mean, these would be the sorts of things that I, as an architect, would run through. What are all of my options? What are the pros and cons with all of my, all of these different options? If I say my objective is certain number of units, and then I have to see what I can do. And then if I say, on top of that, my next objective is to save the existing house and the gardens. And then my next objective is to save these particular trees. And then if I can't meet all of my objectives, then I say, okay, here's my alternatives. I can do this, but I can't do that. I can, you know. And so, or if I do this, you know, it's going to be more expensive or. But without running through. Without setting out what you're trying to accomplish first. So the reason I'm suggesting these things is. For one, had to do with shadows and two had to do with the scale of the building next to the existing house. Now, maybe they're going to come back and say, this is the only way we can do it. Well, is this better than what they proposed before? Yes, it is. Would I try and push it for being even better? Yes, I would, you know?
Yeah.
That's the way I see it.
Yeah.
Rich has his hand raised. Is he muted?
Can you hear us, Rich? Rich, we would love to hear from you. Okay, whenever you chime in, we will stop, but I I.
I I had to call back in, so I didn't, I wasn't on the panel, I don't think. So that's fine.
Good. Oh, okay, okay. Um, did you have anything you wanted to add, or should I continue?
Nope, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, okay, great.
Is Rich on the panelists or attendees? He looks to be on the attendee.
Attendee, but I can just promote him right now. Yeah, that was, that was the, what I was, thanks.
Oh, thank you. Did they change their uh, unit count, um, Cheryl? Or did Tim just, did um?
Yeah, there's a a twenty, a twenty-two percent reduction um, from one hundred eighteen units to ninety-two units.
Okay, that's that's an improvement. Um. Okay. And there, is there a reason why they didn't go? Oh, it's the trees, isn't it? That's why they didn't go right up against. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, there's some beautiful, I mean, there's some beautiful trees that are. In that, you know, existing trees that are in that island, you remember from the sidewalk? Um, you know, they're they're huge, beautiful.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's why. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's why.
Mm-hmm. Um, okay, before I forget, Tim, you had mentioned. Um. Next week, they're going to talk about traffic, the following week, design, the following week, engineer, engineering. Um, so the fourth week from now. Um, is when we would want to have our comments ready.
So Denny, that's for the, that's for the six forty-eight um, hearing. Um, so I I I think whatever the the first week in April. Um, is is the date that they've reserved for town testimony. So I'll be. I'll be there with um, with my fellow department heads. Um, Steve O'Donnell from the Historical Commission has asked for some time. And then I think that would be the time for for the planning board to offer, um, you know, their initial comments on um. On on the project and on the peer review. So that's for six forty-eight. For um, for for five eighty-two. I am going to. Pop into my email and let you know, I think it's the. Um, I think that hearing has been continued. To the twenty-fourth, so it's two weeks from yesterday. Um, and that'll be, that'll be the time when that development team. Um, will be kind of presenting a a more detailed version of of the diagrams and and the project that that we're looking at right now. Um, they've had to sort of, they've got their general kind of idea of their new stormwater system. I think they're running the analysis on that. Um, and and again, some more detailed architectural drawing, so um. You know, in in terms of, you know, I I I think the request for the shadow study is probably an appropriate thing to kind of get in there. Um. You know, ASAP. Um, so that maybe that's something that can be presented. Um, at that hearing in two weeks. I I I I'm pretty sure that they intend on doing that, but it it doesn't hurt to remind them that that would be a very helpful. Um, thing. Cheryl, in 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 the city, the shadow study only kicks in at a hundred and fifty feet, so. Um. Milton's a different place, um, and and and. Um, I I I do agree that um, a shadow study on on this building. Um, is is a good idea, because I think um, when you see those shadow studies, it's really interesting. Um, you know, what what the actual effect is. Um, so I think it'll be a good visual for people. Um.
Yeah, I mean, we could ask for them to do it like they do in Boston, which is at the Solstice. So um, winter, spring, uh, summer and fall, and then. Uh, four times a day, I think it's nine AM, noon, three PM and six PM. And. You know, the software is is readily available to. To do those pretty quickly, so it shouldn't be a burden to them to do it. And I I would suggest it for here because of the gardens, you know, um, and uh. They weren't designed to be shade gardens, I think, as somebody had said.
Yeah, so five eighty-two Blue Hill is meeting on Wednesdays.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
And I'm looking at the calendar.
Mm-hmm.
And then um, the uh, six forty-eight Canton is meeting on Tuesdays. And the Ice House is meeting on Thursdays.
So I guess I would just ask Tim if you're involved with all of the scheduling on the Ice House. If they're going to talk about the design on a Thursday that happens to be the second or the fourth Thursday. That um, maybe they could consider design on the first or the third. Thursday so that. You know, one of us, at least one of us could participate. And not conflict with any board meetings.
Yep. I will do that.
Well, um. It sounds like Tim, that you think maybe we should wait on any other comments for five eighty-two until after the twenty-fourth, except maybe the request for the shadow study?
Yeah, and and you know, what what I can do is, um. You know, and 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 maybe one of you wants to do it and and send it to me and I can pass it along, or or I can do it directly. I think, you know, the the request for the shadow study, and then I think just, you know, posing the question of, you know. If you oriented the West Building towards the street, um, you know, I I I think even kind of seeing that option would be very helpful for everybody. Um, you know, Cheryl, you're 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 familiar with how, you know, we used to do design review. Everyone likes to. You know, show your work, um, you know, and and tell us why. You know, this is not something that's feasible, um, you know, because I think it gives everyone, you know, the information and it. And it could be that, you know, it's just an intolerable condition to take down those trees and it makes the site really bad. Um, but you don't, you don't know that until you see it. So I do actually think that that's a fair request to make also. Um, in anticipation of that meeting in two weeks.
Okay. Well, um, I mean. I I think if if I'm perfectly happy for you just to make that request as a follow up to our meeting tonight. But I'm happy to send an email if you prefer it that way.
Um, I can, I I I'll do it. Um, I appreciate your trust in me to do that. I think it should be a pretty easy email. And I'll make sure I get it done.
Okay.
And on on six forty-eight, um, do we have any comments that we want to get into them? Now, or should we wait until they've gone through the traffic hearing and the design hearing? Or do we want to be ahead of the design hearing?
Um, I think we need to, we've already sent in our comment letters, and I think we really need to see how this plays out a little bit more. I'd like to hear more of the peer reviews. Um, and then come back. I think it's not for for this point, it's so early on, it's just the first hearing. And the last, you know, the hearing they had the other night was just like, hi, how are you? Here we are on planet Earth, and this is why our project is wonderful, because it's the same size as the high school. So, you know, um, so.
And a hospital, yeah. And it fits in, don't you know?
Yeah, it was.
And we doubled the size.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, so I think it's too early at this point, because I'd like to, you know, I think. You know, I, I think I'm, I did represent the town when Brian Hurley was on the Henry's plant. And at that point, you know, you, so I sat in, you know, on all the hearings and then towards the end. You know, came after listening to the comments from the fire chief and the police department and the Concom and the DPW, whatever. You could come up with proposed conditions and 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 issues, and I think it's now too early. I don't want to waste our, I don't want to waste our ammunition for right now. Well, I'd like to be able to put it in when it's got some effect.
One thing that I say is the peer review architect for five eighty-two. Did review our comment letter and the massing analysis and was, you know, analysis comparing it to the other multifamilies. It seemed to me he found that to be helpful, pretty helpful in terms of his comment letter. So hopefully, um, he'll do the same, you know, for um. For six forty-eight Canton Ave as well. Because I do, what I'm hoping is that. That that project will get to a place like five eighty-two. Where there's a push to get a revised design. And that's why, um, because this is proceeding in a much different way. That's why I asked him about it, because I was concerned about. Um. You know, how that revised design is going to get pushed. Right? Because if it's only through peer review, because the other, the the board that's doing the five eighty-two. Is hearing from neighbors and their peer review and other people. And you know, so they were being sort of. Um, coming, you know, coming at, they were getting a lot of information from a lot of sources in order to kind of put pressure to kind of come up with that. New strategy and um, I just want to make sure that the. That that same kind of push is there for six forty-eight so that they come up with a revised strategy there too.
Mm-hmm.
Cheryl.
Cheryl, oh, sorry. No, no, you go for it.
Um, on on six forty-eight Canton Avenue, when I was on the last sidewalk. And they showed us that, um. They were putting. Um. On the new property in the back sidewalk, that's.
Six fifty-two?
Six fifty-two. They were putting townhouse-like. Structures in the back of the property. So that the properties on Winter Valley would look out the their back windows, and they would see smaller structures. And then behind the smaller structures, it would get to the bigger structure. And I was thinking. Wouldn't that be better if you had smaller structures, like when? When the residents of Holmes Lane walk out the front door and they're just looking at a flat wall. Five stories high, wouldn't it be better if that was pushed back? And maybe even townhouses, and then it would build up. I would never recommend it building up to five stories, but. What I'm saying is it's crazy for the abutters to just be. Walking out to a a flat box-like structure that's five stories. It would make sense if if the first thing they were to see was something that was.
Yeah, except that there, it's not saying that it's a flat surface. They, I mean, I'm I'm just telling you what they said, not how it looks. But they've said, oh, they've got, you know, mat, you know, sort of back and forth treatment, so it doesn't, it's not like a. A long-running football field of the same thing on a straight line. It's got, you know, on the design, it's got some breakup in it so that it. It doesn't have a solid wall. And of course, you know, supposedly they're going to be putting in screening, of course. Putting a couple little skinny little trees is not going to make much difference, but that's. Their response yesterday to that issue on Tuesday.
Well, what I would say about the strategy, um. Is that six forty-eight is a narrower site than six fifty-two. Because um. The six fifty-two. Uh. Uh, is wide enough that it allows those townhouses, circulation between the townhouses and then building in the middle. Um, I'm not sure six forty-eight has is the same amount of room for that. What they've done is they've shifted the bulk of the building. Towards um. Uh, away from Holmes Lane and towards the private lane and the. The family named Kelly that has the property all along that. Uh, property line, water. And so it's that wall that is uninterrupted the most. And that is the tallest. What faces Holmes Lane is actually the garage wall, you know, because it's all garage, it's a straight line. And, you know, um. They call it underground, but it's really. Only underground at the furthest end. And then it's it's sloping, and I'm not sure it's even fully underground there when I looked at their um. Grading plan. So it's partially. Underground and partially above ground. So that's, and then, you know, the. I I, you know, the the reality of all the open space being on a, on a roof deck of a garage is still. You know, it's not the same. You know, um, and trees, you you need a ton of, you need a lot of soil. You know, for a tree to grow, and so. You're going to put planters, maybe, you know, three, a planter on top of that deck. Um, to get a tree in there. Otherwise, it's just going to be like ground covering and stuff, because. You know, they say that you're going to come out from the second floor onto that. So. If you think about it, what's the assembly that allows? Um. Soils for plants to grow. Where is it going? You're not stepping up three feet from that level. You know, that's the roof of the garage and that floor level. So there's a lot of things there about that, you know, it's a pretty picture. But knowing what I know about how you actually build that, you know, it's a pretty picture to me. It's not like a reality picture. Um. In terms of that open space, um. And, you know, because they're trying to put so much on the site, they've limited. You know, their options of how to plan the site. Right? They they decided that it has to be, you know. You know, to put the building so close to the property line towards the Kelly property. Where there's no tree left. The road is next to the existing stone wall, and that's within the buffer and right next to the twenty-five foot no build zone. There's just a lot about that that is. Um. You know, if 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 you were thinking about, is that really going to work? You'd question whether that was really going to work, right? As you question the foundation going there, you question where all the water is going to go. There's just lots of big questions about how much they're trying to put there. So that's why it's like they. Maybe the the. The civil analysis will be such that. It would be similar to the five eighty-two where the civil said, look. You're not even meeting state stormwater standards here with what you propose, right? And.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think that, I mean, I think that Ned's made that comment, and I think their own soils guy said. The soils weren't right.
Oh, on six forty-eight, it was pretty astounding. Deselle Burke's. Um, staff person said that the soils are such that they don't allow water to um. Permeate, so it all runs off site.
Yeah, it all runs out.
And the groundwater is twenty inches below gray.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Like, okay, so you're going to. This big building in there, and it's not going to change any of the water patterns around there. I mean, anyway. I think that's going to be. Something that'll drive a new site plan and a new, you know, sort of approach, um, I'm hoping, because that's what needs to happen. Um, I mean. Uh, but I do think. Uh, I appreciate what Tim has laid out in terms of. You know, when we can provide comments after the uh, peer review and after the architect's peer review. We know the architect has our comments and our graphics. And so that that's good in my mind, because he knows what we're thinking. And then we can, uh, we can see what the, whether um. They feel as if there's enough in the all of those comments that would push them to redesign in some way. So.
Cheryl, Cheryl, just a a quick question, um, and I I should have followed up with this offline, um. Uh, the the chair of the five eighty-two hearing, I I think I passed this along to you. He had asked if you could populate. Your kind of graphics collage with the new design.
Yes.
Did I get, did I get you the?
I think you were going to tell me when he wanted that.
Oh, um. Well. The hearing's not for another two weeks. Um, yeah, not already, no.
How about a week out from now? So I have to build the model of this um, new one, um.
I I I think that would work just fine.
Okay, so uh, I'll I'll put that down right now and get it into my calendar here. So we're.
I I I think I think everyone is finding that kind of that package to be very useful. Um, so I think they um, they 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 like to see it updated, because I think they're really, um, they're leaning on it.
Okay, good. Um, yeah, I can do that. I'm sorry, I I forgot about that while I was late, but I will do that.
Um, okay, so what I'm gathering is for six forty-eight, um, we want to get our comments together. Around the first week of April. For five eighty-two, we want to wait until after March twenty-fourth. Um. And and then get some thoughts together then.
So so Denny, ju- ju- just just on that, um, you know, like I said, there'll there'll be a weekly hearing. So, so Denny, ju- ju- just, just on that, um, you know, like I said, there'll, there'll be a weekly hearing, um, we should have the peer review. I, I'm, I'm really hoping that we'll have all of the peer review reports. In before this board's next meeting, so it may make sense to maybe put an agenda item on, um, you may not have seen all the presentations. But we should have all the material for the board to review, um, so you can start to maybe formulate some ideas, um, on, on that material.
Okay, and would you be putting that in our share folder, or should we look for that on the?
I'll, 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 I'll email that to the board as they come in, and then, um, if, if that is in fact an item on the agenda. Um, we'll, um, we'll make sure that's in the folder as well.
Okay, that's great, and that way we will be chipping away and putting our, you know, getting our comments together. Um, and, and rushing the ones in that are very time-sensitive and saving the rest for a bigger presentation when the time is right.
So if I could just ask Tim if you could also try and. Find out what the applicant's going to do next with the design, if they're going to try. The proposal, if the Board of Appeal that's hearing the Ice House is going to ask them to try that proposal. Um, it would be good to know if they're going to discuss that, um, so if you can find out when that, that might be discussed, we can.
Yeah, Cheryl, so, so that, so that, that, that came out of the, um, the, 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 the design peer reviewer presented last week, and that's kind of when that. Emerged for them, so, so that conversation has kind of happened, um, so it, it may, it may make sense, um. So you, you had said that it would be helpful to see a massing diagram of that scenario, so that, that may be something that I send in to the, to the, to the chair of that panel. Um, just as, as something to, to pass along to the applicant. Um, because I think the next time that we talk about design will be kind of in the context of. You know, having heard the rest of the, the peer review studies, because I think, you know, what I've been trying to impress upon each of these panels is that. You know, let's not send off the applicant to make changes on the stormwater system until we get the design peer review and vice versa, because these things are all holistic and tied in. So I think, um, you know, they're gonna be looking at all that stuff together, but the design conversation kind of has, has, you know, happened. Um, so I think, you know, getting that material, um. I'll, I'll make that request if, if the board doesn't mind.
Yeah, I think that might be good as well as a site plan, I mean, and it could be, you know, fairly simple site plan, doesn't have to be an engineered site plan, in other words, it's an architectural site plan, showing the building and the parking. So not just the massing diagram, I mean, the massing diagram should, should, could show the parking as well, I'm just. Because they have that easement on the, I think, the northern side, um. They are using the easement for a drive, if they flip the building, they don't have that opportunity, so. It just makes me wonder how close the parking has to get to the neighboring par, the single family. And that's why I, I'd like to see the, the layout as well.
Got it, so I will, I will send that to, to the chair of that panel and, and formally make that request on behalf of the board.
Great, thank you.
Okay. All right, um, and, um. Let's see, so I'm, I'm kind of getting a little bit tired, um, for the next topic, which is the, um. Housing production strategies, I think, um.
Uh, we. I think I could just, um, I, I would suggest that I could just report that I met with the WARC committee. And they voted to approve the article for accessory dwelling units for the town meeting.
Okay, okay.
So that's our hous, that's our housing.
Oh, that's, okay, well, that's a good update, thank you very much, okay, um. So, I, I, I think housing production strategies is something that we should fit in everywhere we can, but I think it's also something that. Um, requires fresh eyes, so if others are okay with that.
So, Denny, do you, do you mind if I just ask whether there's any, um, application yet from Winter Valley on the thirty, additional thirty-six units?
It's a great question.
Uh. Um, we, we, we don't, Allison, we haven't gotten anything from them, I know they've filed with the Board of Appeals, but. I don't have anything from them, um, in terms of a technical review for a site plan approval.
I think that that was the last update that I was aware of to him.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything on it, so, do we even know where they're planning on, or where they're thinking of putting them?
Yes.
In the back, okay, okay.
Um, that does, that does remind me though, um, just, um, as, as a heads up to, to you all, um. I did get a draft site plan review application for four forty Granite Ave, um, which is, um, a project that. Um, this board had seen an informational presentation on, so we are in the process of doing a, a technical review. Um, for completeness, um, on that application, to make sure that this board gets a, um. A complete application to, to consider, the, the way that that's gonna go is, is a sort of, um, relatively parallel process of. Site plan review, uh, by the planning board and, um, uh, special permit slash variance, um. Public hearing, um, at the, um, at the Board of Appeals, um, they do need a, a number of variances for, for parking and use. And, um, height, which is. A can of worms that we can talk about, um, uh, another time, but I'm in the middle of that technical review, um, I'm hoping to get that back to the applicant. Um, by the end of next week, so that's something that, um, depending on how long it takes. Um, them to respond to anything that I catch, um, that may be, um, an application that we see in the relatively near future.
Great, thank you for keeping us posted. Um, okay, well, if, if everyone is okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor, Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Okay, uh, i- i- thanks means yes, so, uh.
Yes, sorry.
Oh, okay, I thought you said thanks.
No, no, yes, sorry, maybe it came out messed up. Tired, sorry.
That's why I'm wrapping up too. Okay, um, Cheryl, to guys?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Denny Swenson, yes, good night, everyone.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Yes.
Good night.